Okay, I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council regular meeting of Malibu, or excuse me, of May 29, 2018. May I have a real call, please?
Councilmember Lamont.
Here.
Councilmember Peak.
Here.
Councilmember Rosenthal.
Here.
Mayor Proton Wagner.
Here.
Mayor Mullin.
Here.
You have a call?
Uma, Peak, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
She'll help us.
Thank you, Uma, appreciate that. May I have an approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 17, 2018, with the amended agenda posted the same day.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, we're now on to ceremonial presentations, and I would like Los Angeles County Sheriff's deputies Mike Trinan and Gordon Peters to meet me at the podium, please. All right, gentlemen, get right here, thank you very much. All right, listen up, everybody. Whereas on May 10, 2018, at approximately 1:30 PM, Deputy Mike Trinan and Deputy Gordon Peters responded to Corral Beach regarding a man with a knife who was cutting himself and possibly attempting suicide, and whereas the deputies arrived, when the deputies arrived, they observed a man with a large knife who was cutting himself and approached him from a safe distance and repeatedly attempted to persuade him to stop hurting himself and to put the knife down, and whereas the deputies called for backup, requested the crisis negotiating team, had the fire department staged nearby, cleared beachgoers from the immediate area while they attempted to resolve the situation, and whereas the deputies continued to calmly attempt to persuade the man to drop the knife, he continued to insist that they shoot him and then suddenly screamed, "You are going to shoot me," and began advancing toward the deputies with the knife in his hand, and whereas when the man advanced toward them with the knife, Deputy Peters fired one round from the less lethal stun gun, stun bag weapon, striking the man in the midsection, which was effective, the man fell to the ground, and whereas the deputies quickly approached the man to handcuff him to prevent further danger, and Deputy Trinan grabbed the knife and threw it a safe distance from the scene. The man was then transported to a hospital with moderate injuries from the knife, but otherwise unharmed. Now therefore be resolved that the Malibu City Council commends Deputy Trinan and Deputy Peters for their reverence for human life and for their composure and professionalism under extreme circumstances. So that's pretty impressive, and I'm going to give these gentlemen their commendations here in a second, but I want to say a couple things. This is a complicated encounter, and they have to do a lot of different things. They have to think quickly, they have to protect this gentleman from himself and the rest of the public, and they have to go through a whole series of options that they have to think about and effectively resolve the situation without anybody losing their life. Very impressive, and it's a great example of the, of the complicated things that these incredible professionals have to deal with on a daily basis, and I just wanted to say, on behalf of the residents of the city of Malibu and myself as the mayor, I sincerely appreciate your professionalism, gentlemen, and it's a great honor for me to have a moment like this to recognize the fine professionals that we have in the LA County Sheriff's Department. So congratulations, job well done, Mike.
Thank you.
Here you go.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, either of you like to take this moment to say a few words or give your version of events?
That's in the report.
I just want to thank you for this. It's very, it's very nice. We appreciate it, and we're just glad on that day that everything worked out. It was a pretty textbook, really. So everything worked out, and he got the help he needed. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Classic, men of few words. I like it. It's like, just another day at the office. All right, well, we'll get a picture today again. Do we do it up in front here? Okay. Everybody in here. Okay, one, two, three. Let me do one more, okay. One, two, three. That's one of the great things about being the mayor, and you know, I always say, I teach a leadership class in the fire department, and I say, there's an expression I use, which is, success is not spectacular, or not always spectacular, and this is a great example of that. These guys resolved a situation that could have resolved, could have turned out completely differently and wasn't that big a deal for them, and they downplayed, but there's a lot of professionalism that goes into that, and I really appreciate the hard work for those guys. Okay, now we're on to oral and written communications from the public for matters which are not on the agenda, for which the city council has subject matter jurisdiction. And I have some speaker slips here. First up is Victor Camont. Am I pronouncing that right? And Victor will be followed by Johan Lottz, will be followed by Linda Gibbs. Victor, you're up. Correct, right there at the microphone. There you go, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you for your time. My name is Victor Stephen Camont. I've lived in Malibu for 42 years. I'm a waterman, builder, an artist photographer. Actually just graduated from Pierce College, magna cum laude, with a degree in journalism and photojournalism, and I've worked for both the Malibu Times and Service Side News. Then I just graduated two years ago, magna cum laude, from California State University, Northridge, with degrees in cinema, television, visual arts, and acting and directing, and film and theater. I also founded the first peace club in North America of its kind at a university. I was the president and founder. I want to stay in Malibu. The rent is getting worse and worse and harder and harder to stay here. I've been a builder and made a lot of people a lot of money here, but I need help. So I'm hoping that we can have some sort of affordable housing and some sort of a system to help the people, because I don't want to become homeless, and I feel like I have a lot to contribute to the community, which I have for the last 42 years. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Victor. Victor, you're followed by Mr. Lottz. Latz, Latz, and followed by Linda Gibbs.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, mayor, and I come tonight as a Malibu resident, a business owner, and as a journalist. First, as a resident, in my personal opinion, you are all very smart people, acting in the best interests of Malibu. Riva Feldman is an outstanding city manager, worth every penny that she earns, not the issue tonight. The issue is the First Amendment and the California Open Meetings law. As a reporter, I've been dealing with First Amendment issues in California for 40 years. As assignments manager at Channel 5, at CBS News, and at ABC Television before I retired, I have a lot of experience with it. So does your city manager, your city attorney, who is extremely capable, extremely courteous, and very competent. But, I'll cut to the chase. The city attorney got it right, and she got it wrong, two weeks ago, when you took a vote, in secret, on a new contract for the city manager. The plain language of the Brown Act certainly allows you to meet an executive session to review the performance of the city manager, and you did that. But the plain language of the statute also requires you to stop and end that confidential consultation when you start to take any action that affects the employment status of any public employee. Your decision to properly offer a new contract and to raise the city manager's salary changed her employment status. That discussion and vote should have been made in public. Failing that, the vote to offer the new contract should have been reported that night by the city attorney when the city council reconvened. We got a report of no reportable action, a statement from the city manager, from the city attorney. So I had to say, that wasn't true. There was reportable action. There was action taken that affected the employment status of a city employee. She went from city manager with a contract to city manager with a new contract offer. That was specifically reportable under the Brown Act, and it was not disclosed for a full week until this week's agenda came up. That meant it missed the newspaper's deadlines last week. The people of Malibu were thus largely denied the opportunity to discuss this issue in public, to contact their elected representatives with their opinions. The people of Malibu were thus denied their rights under the California Open Meetings Act. The act of extending the contract offer and raise to the city manager should have occurred in public, and it turns out, the vote may not have been unanimous after all. I don't know. We don't know. It was secret. Look here for this, of course, vote in public, and you're going to do in that tonight anyway, so it's no real big deal. But Malibu is always awash with these silly rumors of corruption and official chicanery, and when you do something like this, it just adds to that fire. You had no reason to cover up the fair and honest assessment and the vote that you made last week. Democracy is not always pretty, but it needs to be open. I come to as a reporter to say, you guys need to be open when you do this. Have your discussions with your department heads in secret like you're supposed to, behind closed doors, but when it comes to the discussion and to the vote, that has to be out here, not upstairs. Thank you so much for listening, and I don't mean to be critical. I've been speaking as a reporter tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lottz. Latz, Latz, excuse me. And Linda Gibbs, you are next, and Linda will be followed by Graham Clifford.
Greetings, neighbors and friends and staff, and thank you for answering the call to become this body that is named Malibu City Council. And thank you for being here tonight to hear our concerns. I'm Linda Gibbs, and I've been asked by Poison Free Malibu to come speak here today by Keon and Joel. As you know, they've been dedicating their days to ending the poisons that are disrupting our wildlife, and Keon today, at this very moment, is speaking with some concerned citizens in Agora to teach them how to help their city become poison-free. Joel couldn't make it at this moment, but he will be here later to speak about the item on the agenda for the earth friendly management. I'm here to speak tonight because, let's see here, Santa Monica Mountains Fund is a specific fund that goes through the national parks, and they gave $126,000 in 2017 that helped fund biologists and wildlife specialists that did all the data that Poison Free Malibu relies on for their data about what's happening with the wildlife. And they have started a campaign called Break the Poison Chain, and this is a pledge drive that is aimed at getting 10,000 people to sign on and commit to not using poisons. So anyone listening tonight, now, or in the future as recording, can go to samofund.org/takethepledge and sign on. And what we're asking you today, and I believe, when I signed up, I gave seven, so we have the city manager, the attorney, and each one of you members, a copy of the letter that was written by the city of Agora, and we're asking that the city of Malibu also write a similar letter of support of this campaign, and also publicize this campaign on the website. So that's our ask today. And, oh, and I'm also supposed to tell you that Calabasas, Ojai, Camarillo, Simi Valley, and Thousand Oaks have already sent letters of support, and then the fund will use those to help publicize their fund, their campaign. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Graham Clifford, you are next, and Graham will be followed by Debra Frankel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here to talk about what has become known in eastern Malibu as the Malibu Beach Inn Valet Crosswalk, because there is no other reason to be building, to be building this crosswalk at the Malibu Beach Inn. In fact, as far as I can tell, it failed most of the requirements to have passed in order to be, in order for a crosswalk to be built, namely, the main one was, it's, you're supposed to have at least 20 jaywalkers crossing the street illegally in order to be eligible to put a crosswalk in. Well, at that, at that, at that location, there were nine. Wasn't even 50%. And this crosswalk is in the middle of Malibu, and the city of Malibu took no interest in this thing, and, 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 and they should, because it's a safety hazard. It's, it's less, it's a couple of hundred feet from another crosswalk at the pier. It's just the length of the parking lot away. Totally unnecessary and a safety hazard. I went to the Public Safety Commission meeting, maybe the last one or the one before, where Abdi Sagarfi was there from Caltrans, and, and I brought the issue up then. And, and I just think something needs to be done about this, because this crosswalk should not be built. And one of your planning commissioners, Steve Euring, did a lot of research on this issue and knows a lot more about the facts than I do, and he's in the audience here, so if you want to ask him what's really going on, then Steve would be one of the best people to ask. And now, also, as far as I know, there was no community input on this thing. Now, Lou and I are the only ones who live in the East End here, and the other, the rest of you probably don't drive to Santa Monica on a daily basis, but I do, and, and, you know, we're used to all the blockages on the PCH heading in our direction, namely Topanga, which is a constant one, Nobu, which is another constant one, and now we're adding to that by sticking a crosswalk in where nobody's going to use it. Why would anybody from the hotel want to cross to the land side? The only people wanting to use that crosswalk are the valets going to the Hertz parking lot, and, and that's all it's about. And somehow or other, this thing got through, and it, and in early reports, it was said that the, that the Coastal Commission required this crosswalk to be built because of some beach access left over from the former owner of the hotel, which, as far as I can tell, in my research, is also totally inaccurate. The, as far as I can tell, the Coastal Commission said if the city of Malibu thinks it's okay, then it's okay with us, but we're not requiring it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Graham.
Ask Steve.
And Graham is followed by Debra Frankel, and Debra is the last speaker.
Been a while. I'm here about Puercos Canyon and what's going on up there right now, and I don't think the community is aware of what's going on there. So I hike there all the time, and it used to look like this, really pretty plants by the side of the road. I talked to them. They were lovely. And then the other day, I went there and they were spraying on there, and now it looks like this, death. And you walk up for over a mile, and it just looks like death. So I'm like, what's going on here? So it was obviously spraying, they sprayed Roundup, which is Monsanto's poison, which we, we all know is really, really bad, and, and I think it's illegal in Malibu to spray that. So it seems like they sprayed on Malibu land, and then some of the land is owned by MRCA. They also sprayed at the wrong time. If you're going to spray that stuff, apparently you got to do it at the end of the day. They sprayed between 10 and 12 in the morning. So, you know, I saw a snake by the side of the road, and he could have been dead. You know, I see dogs walking up there all the time, you know, and they're going to be affected by this, and people, you know, we even feel strange. The stuff is poisonous, doesn't belong anywhere. So the other issue today is the development that's going on there. So what I learned is probably the reason why they were doing the spraying is because they want to widen the road. First of all, you don't need to spray to widen the road. If you're going to widen the road, you, there's other ways to get rid of the plants. And second of all, now I've heard that MRCA is putting a camp up there for underprivileged kids, which is a great idea for some kids, if you have the right oversight, and you're watching to make sure they're not putting graffiti all over the rocks like they are in a lot of the rocks in the hiking areas here now that I see. And, but also, I heard it's 300 to 400 cars a day that they're looking for up there. That's a lot. That's a complete, completely ridiculous in my book. I mean, if they want to make something small that's appropriate for the area, that's one thing, you know, that could be great, but we already have an unbelievable amount of traffic in Malibu. That's just, you know, it's a fire area. It's just really bad. So I don't approve of you guys approving that. I want, I want everyone to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Debra.
You're welcome.
Your disapproval is noted. I'm just kidding.
What?
I'm just kidding. Thank you very much for your comments. Do you live in Puercos?
No, I live in Point Dume.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
But I do know some people in Puercos are, you know.
Not happy with it either. Yeah, we've spoken to them. All right, thanks. All right, thanks. Jefferson wants you to hang out, if you don't mind.
Glad you can hear my comments. Thank you.
There you go. And that is it for public comments. And now we're on to commission updates. And we have one from Carol Rendell.
Good evening, mayor and council members. As Chair of the Public Safety Commission, I'd like to bring you up to date on a few of the issues we've been working on. We have representation from the sheriff's office and the OPs, the city's public safety and public works departments. Caltrans also was represented at our last meeting by Abdi Sagafi, Office of Corridor Management Chief for Caltrans District 7 Division of Traffic. And he will be at our meetings on a regular basis in the future, probably quarterly. And yes, we did mention to him the problem of the Topanga Light during commute times. He will look into it, and we will follow up. Of major importance is homelessness in Malibu and what can be done to keep our city safe from fires caused by the encampments. Chris Frost, Vice Chair of our group, is our representative on the city's homeless advisory group, and he gives us monthly updates. Also, Susan Duñez informed us of the monthly encampment cleanup program that has been initiated, which should help with the fire safety issue. Abdi addressed concerns of the commission and the public about the various construction projects in the civic center. There was a rush to get these projects done before the summer moratorium. Unfortunately, that meant that the La Costa Crosswalk will not be started until after Labor Day. It's been five years in the making, and I was very disappointed personally. We also get a monthly update on city projects from the public works personnel, such as a regular review of the speed study on Point Dume. We are pleased to have had a number of residents at our meetings who have brought up concerns which will be on future agendas, one of which is the major parking problem at the bottom of Corral Canyon outside of the Solstice Gate. It looks like we have a situation comparable to what we had at Paradise Cove a while back. The item is on our agenda for our next meeting, which is June 6th, next Wednesday. Anyone interested is invited to attend. Future items we are looking at are the study of areas in the city to be considered for requirement of safety enhancements that would prevent vehicle pedestrian accidents, like the cars run amok in malls. Also, we hope to meet with Southern California Edison regarding the potential to upgrade street lighting on PCH. Another favorite of mine is creating a deterrent to being on a cell phone while crossing the street. Also, I am the commission's representative on the PCH task force, and I attend all quarterly meetings. Anybody any questions? I think you were given an update on the hotel crosswalk. And when we talked to Abdi about it, I think that was all kind of news to him. So I'm expecting him to come back with some answers.
Thank you very much, Carol.
Thank you.
And now we're on to comments from our city manager update.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a few things. I'd like to congratulate deputies Trinan and Peters and thank them not only for what they did in this incident, but for what they do every day for our community and how they keep us all safe and are just really good friends to Malibu. So thank you for that. And then just a brief update on the paving associated with the Civic Center wastewater treatment facility. We will be paving between next Monday, June 4th, and Thursday, June 7th, from 8:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And we'll be paving Cross Creek and Civic Center Way from Webway to Cross Creek and Stewart Ranch Road. The area of Civic Center from Webway to Malibu Canyon will be paved as part of the Civic Center Way Improvement Project, so that won't be done at this time. So I just wanted to provide that update and happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
All right, we're on to comments from council members. Skylar, you want to go first?
Sure, I'm just making some notes. Deborah, where are you? Right there. I think that it's unfortunate. It's actually not illegal to spray Roundup in Malibu. I wish that it was actually illegal to spray Roundup anywhere in the United States or anywhere in the world, because it is a poisonous chemical that causes cancer. I believe that Monsanto recently lost another lawsuit about that in, I think, the past week or so. So it's very frustrating when organizations use that chemical, and the city is actively working to stop that. And there's some other things that we may talk about that later this evening, but I'll save that for that item. But thank you for coming and bringing that to our attention. And I think that the staff as well are aware of some of the challenges going on and opportunities with the conservancy. So we're working through that stuff continuously. Like to obviously thank the deputies for their commitment to our community. And Mike and Deputy Peters, we're just really lucky to have you guys, so thank you very much. Last week, I had a energy conference call for my role as our representative on the LACE Energy Committee. And we're just kind of reviewing some of the more long-term projections for usage and demand and how that's going to work with procurement with alternative energy resources to provide the city. And hopefully that's going to be coming online, probably not for like a year for us, but there's going to be many more details. It'll be worked out through that in the future. And just in regards to the crosswalk that Graham brought up, I think, I don't know how the rest of the council feels on this, but I think we should maybe have somebody from Caltrans come and kind of really wrap our heads around this one and see what's going on, because it hasn't entirely been built yet, that's my understanding. And there's a lot of opposition within the community to it. It seems like at this point that we've been made aware that it didn't meet a lot of the criteria, and somehow it happened. I don't know how or why, or they said we approved it, and we said they approved it. And, you know, if they don't have a problem, we don't have a problem thing, or what's going on with it? But I just want to know what's going on with it and how it happened and why it happened. So I don't know how we reeve it best to get that answer, but it seems like having someone from Caltrans or maybe the Coastal Commission or someone come to let us know what's going on.
I'll certainly reach out and ask them to do that.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Skylar. Lou?
Thank you. I want to echo what Skylar said about Mike and Deputy Peters, but I want to expand a little bit. The one thing that I've noticed about our sheriff's department, and Mike Trinan is a classic example of that, starting with the sheriff and Josh Ty and Jim Royal. Our sheriff's department has a combination that is perfect of compassion and justice. And we're delighted to have you. You guys do a fantastic job. Thank you. Now, before I get to my comments, I just wanted to ask Christie to address some of the stuff that Hans was talking about.
Good evening, council. Rest assured, you are in full compliance with the Brown Act. Let me explain it. In order to get to the point where you have a contract amendment on the open session agenda, like you do tonight, there are two things that precede it. The first is a performance evaluation. And Mr. Lats made it clear that he has no quarrel with going into closed session to discuss performance evaluation. The reason that that's important is because if we had our performance evaluations of our senior staff in public, you know, one of two things would get compromised. Either you wouldn't be candid, because you're in public, you wouldn't embarrass somebody. Or you'd be candid, and you'd be in public, and you'd embarrass somebody, and then you'd never be able to retain anybody of quality who'd want to work under those circumstances. So the Brown Act has carved out employee evaluations as something that can be done privately for those reasons. The second thing, which is the step that I think Mr. Lats is skipping over, is that you, with the city manager, you contract. You have a contract with her, and that defines her employment terms. Unlike all the other employees who are in the civil service and whose benefits are defined as a group, with the department heads and with the city manager, there's a contract. And so the terms of those contracts are negotiable. So you might want her to be the city manager, but, you know, you may not be offering her benefits or compensation that she's willing to accept. And then you wouldn't have a contract. So right now, you have a contract with the city manager, and she is the city manager. And that contract doesn't expire until May of next year. So if you had done nothing, then she would have still been the city manager. That's her employment status. She's the city manager. But the contract would be unchanged. What's in front of you tonight is to change the contract. And so the Brown Act also carves out the opportunity for you to meet in closed session, not with the person you're negotiating with, not with Riva. And you'll all recall, and you can shake your heads positively, that Riva was absolutely not in the room when we were discussing the terms of her contract. But you can do that so that you can speak candidly amongst yourselves about whether or not you want to offer something or not, whether this is a good time, a strategy for making sure that you get what you think is the best deal for the city possible. And then you come to an agreement about what you want to offer. Legally, you can't make a final decision on the contract, and I believe you were advised of that at the time, but you can come up with what you'd like to offer, which you did. And that did not change Riva's employment status. She was the city manager before you had that conversation. She'll be the city manager after she has that conversation, because she's got an existing contract. But I took that negotiation instruction, and I laid it out in the staff report, which is now public. And we'll talk about this later, but she agreed to those terms. She assented to those terms. So that means that you have something now to talk about in public. And later on in this agenda, you'll have an opportunity to decide whether or not you want to approve that amendment. It is not done. At this moment, she's still operating under the old contract. If you don't approve that contract later, the old contract will still be in effect, and she'll still be your city manager. So her status, which is the fact that she's the city manager, has been unaffected by this process. What we've been talking about, and we'll talk about again in public, is what are the terms of the contract? Are you going to stick with what you've got now, or are you going to change those terms? So, you know, for reasons that are obvious, policy reasons, the Brown Act has allowed you to both evaluate her and negotiate, come up with a negotiating position outside of the public arena. But before you take action on the contract, you're going to have an opportunity to hear from the public and then deliberate and make a decision.
Thank you. That's what I thought. As far as my comments, I am excited to report that Riva and I went to Sacramento last Friday and saw the Assembly pass our bill AB 3162, the Rehab Reform Act that we're putting together, by a vote of 64 to nothing. And it was terrific. And then we went with Cal... Thank you. Then we went with California Strategies to meet with the Senate Health Committee staff, because that's the next place it's going. And I think we're going to get through there, and we're going to get to the Senate floor, where we already have a lot of support. So it's looking good there, and I'll keep you posted as we move forward with that. I am also a member of the Residential Recovery Reform Coalition in Orange County. And I participated in our conference call as well. And we discussed pending legislation in California about licensed rehab facilities and also at the federal level, where we're working on the So We Living Homes issue. And as Vice Chair of the National League of Cities Federal Advocacy Committee that is responsible for that issue, we're going to also be discussing So We Living Homes in Little Rock, Arkansas next month. I also participated in a conference call with the Coastal Cities Interest Group Leadership Committee, which deals with the Coastal Commission on behalf of the League of California Cities. And I brought up our issues about the FEMA floodplain maps. And apparently, no one else is as concerned about it, which makes me very concerned. And obviously, it looks like we're going to be alone in this battle against them. But we've been alone before. So there's one to let you know about that. So we'll see what happens with that. I also attended with Rick, Laura, Riva, Lisa, and Susan the California Contract Cities Annual Municipal Seminar in Indian Wells, along with representatives of dozens of cities, and the LA County Sheriff, and the Fire Chief, and Supervisors Han and Catherine Barger. And it was a great event. And I want to personally thank the Malibu contingent for your support. I had a panel where I had to do some things that I had never done before. And the support of the city of Malibu, I truly, truly appreciate it, and thank you all very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Lou. Laura?
Are you referring that we laughed when you said a joke?
Yes.
Lou did a great job, led a panel, and it was very interesting and informative. And I thank you for inviting us to that. So a couple of things, I just want to add my thanks to Mike and Gordon. I, you know, it's hard to put into words, I think, in this day and age when we read about so many incidents like this that escalate and end very, very badly. It is heartening to know that this didn't and that you felt like you had skills available and training to deal with something like this. And I would hope that every police officer and peace officer in the country would have that training and have that understanding and have that state of mind and mental stability to deal with it the way you two did. And I know that's not true across our country for lots of things, training and other things. But I am thankful that this ended the way it did and that you both did have all of those things that you needed to have it come out this way and that the gentleman will hopefully get the help that he needs. So thank you. Christie, thank you for your explanation. I just had one other question. Do other cities do it this way, or most cities do everything out in the open, or what?
Yeah, this is very standard procedure.
Thank you. So we're not alone. Everybody does it this way. Okay. And then Graham, yeah, I don't know about... You live all the way on the other side, so you don't drive by the crosswalk either. You're in the county part anyway, but... So that's all, you're not driving by the crosswalk to go to work. And I can't imagine it's a problem at 7:30 in the morning with too many people. So I hear lots of things on both sides. I hear people saying, "We need more crosswalks." And they kind of yell at us for, "How can you let people stand there and jaywalk and run across the highway?" And then other people say, "No, it's going to impact traffic." So I don't know what the right answer is. I think that people are throwing around a lot of facts, or their version of facts, and I don't know that that information is correct or not. And didn't we just have Caltrans here telling us about all the different projects that they're working on on PCH?
Yes.
Okay. So what else did I... We all went to the California Contract Cities Association meeting. It's always good. I did have a chance to sit in a meal with our Fire Chief and discuss the upcoming summer. And I was hopeful, since we've had such a cool spring, that, cool weather-wise, and cool, cool, cool too, that it wouldn't be so hot this summer. But he did say that the forecast is a very hot and dry summer. So that was not great to hear. But he said that they're prepared and ready, as Rick, I'm sure, knows. Your boss, I said good things about you. So, and then also, Rick and I last week, yeah, last week, also, we had the first meeting of the kind of Santa Monica and Malibu unification group. Christie was there. We had legal representation. We had the... Riva was there. We had the consultant that the city has hired to start dealing with coming to an agreement with the board. So I'm excited that that's going forward. The school board, there were three representatives there. Rick and I were representing the city. And we said, "Go forth to our consultants and our staff and make a great agreement." And we will be following up with them and staying in close contact. And excited to have that going forward and want to get this done by September. That's what we told Los Angeles County Office of Education, so we'll have something to bring back to them. back to them. I also had a library commission meeting, LA County Library Commission. Once a year, we meet with our LA County Supervisor's staff, so that's always a really exciting time, because they get to hear what we're doing in the library, and we get to talk to them about our concerns, about budget, and about a whole bunch of different things going on with that. And then, Riva and I also went to the city manager in Calabasas is retiring after fifteen years, and so, Riva and I went and presented him with a City of Malibu tile, and congratulations and thanks, we work with him a lot at the Council of Governments. And I think that that was it. Thank you, I hope everybody had a great Memorial Day weekend, and I just wanted to thank those people that gave the ultimate for protecting our country.
Thank you, Laura. Skylar, I think, has one more comment before Jefferson.
Yes, Mayor. Absolutely want to second what you just said, Laura, about our men and women in uniform across the world, and those that have fallen. And I also wanted to say that, not this weekend, the previous weekend, I went and celebrated, as many of you saw in the newspaper, Mayor Whitman turned a hundred years old. So, I thought that was awesome, and just wanted to bring that up, because it was one of my employees in my private business, that's his grandmother, and I was really, really always a pleasure to see her, and blows my mind that she lives on her own at a hundred, and, you know, I just think it's really cool, so, that's it.
Thank you, Skylar. Jefferson?
Thank you, Rick. Commission, meeting's not really a commission, but last week, here at City Hall in this very auditorium, we had the draft information for the homeless. We had everybody here, there were twenty-five people, I counted, it was taped, I believe, by the city, on our strategic plan for the homeless. And you, sir, were nice enough to come in today, and I hope I've guided you to the right authorities to help you out with your situation. And so, this was a very instructive meeting. The faith-based people and providers were there, the sheriffs were there, it was a great talk, and a great understanding, and a great plan, and I hope we can move forward on it. I have more copies of this in my possession, if somebody wants it afterwards, after the meeting tonight. And then, the quick comment, Two Stripe Mike, right on, that's Mike Trynance's street name, and thank you for your patience, it's because Mike spends so much time with the homeless, that he has a great understanding of their needs and the frustrations that they may go through, and he's got his hands on it all the time. I appreciate that, I see him almost on a daily basis with our PCH and our sidewalks there, and all that I deal with, but he's always been cool, and friendly, and warm to the homeless, and I do appreciate that, and I'm reaching out to Mike to thank him directly. Deborah, I asked you to wait, and I appreciate that. I just presented the city manager about a half an hour ago, a letter to Joe Edmiston about the issues with the broadcast spectrum of the Roundup, and the letter indicates that I visited the site with you, and that there were other witnesses to the behavior, and that Roundup is supposed to be used during a certain timeframe, so that insects don't land on the wet material and transport it. I also mentioned in there the latitude and the longitude, that I walked halfway up to the top with you, and some of those areas are in the City of Malibu. And the road grading, which you have in the pictures and the photos, which I indicated is in the letter, I believe that needs a coastal development permit, because they were pushing soils, adding rock, and widening a road. I mentioned that in the letter as well, because you had witnesses and photos, and that's how things get done. You did the right thing, you contacted a council member, we went up there and viewed it, and now there's a letter being sent out, and it's going to remind Joe of his responsibilities. And thank you for the notification, and a very thorough job. Also, I just want to mention that I went up there, and there were invasive species that were not sprayed, and indigenous local species that were sprayed. And I believe Deborah saw that, too, and we pointed it out, and it was just sad to see that broadcast happening right here in the City of Malibu. Enough on that, but Graham, on the crosswalks, it's frustrating to a number of us. I have close proximity to that crosswalk project, and I'm always curious, when Chris Hansen calls me, or somebody from down at La Costa, when he was the HOA president, five, six years ago, they started on their project, and they're still not with a crosswalk, yet we already have curb cuts, and markers, and work done at the hotel. So, I kind of try to do this balancing, going five, one and a half to two. So... Oh, ten, I've been corrected, thank you, Laura, ten years for that. I was only aware of five or six, but, thank you. So, yeah, where's the balance? Thank you. It's all yours, Rick.
Thank you, Jefferson. Once again, deputies, great job. I know those guys don't like attention being focused on them, but we're going to focus it anyway. So, awesome, discipline, and control, and judgment, and that's what it's all about. And we're extremely lucky to have these fine professionals, as I said. But, you know, we've gone through a recent sort of war on cops, I'll say, in the national narrative, which I was never a supporter of, especially since I'm shoulder-to-shoulder with these gentlemen, in the line of duty, and have been for the last twenty years, and it's a great thing to see you get the recognition that you deserve. So, thank you, gentlemen, for the fine professionalism, I adequately hammered that point home and embarrassed you, sorry about that. Totally modest guys, they don't like to be in the spotlight, and I get that, but thank you anyway. Victor, thank you very much for coming down here, and I really appreciate your words, and we hear them. And it's a difficult situation, but I appreciate you coming down and addressing the council. Mr. Lots, hopefully, Lats, hopefully, you got your answer from Hans, Johan. I hope you got your answer, we got the professional here to give you that. Thank you very much for coming down and bringing that to our attention. Linda, I think, I think we might be able to do a letter of support for this, I don't see any reason why we can't. I would like to ask that we city do a nice letter of support for this effort. Appreciate you coming down here. Are you still here, Linda? And, yes, no? Okay. Well, we'll do it anyway, even though she boogied.
Do we have to put that up on the agenda?
I don't think so.
If you wanted just to...
I could do it from me.
There you go.
Well, you could put...
I could shoot it from there.
I'd like it from, if we could put it on our next agenda, it would be nice that it was from the council.
We can do that. We can do that. Thank you. Anything else you can say about that? Okay, good.
I agree.
Graham, I think you adequately brought the crosswalk to everyone's attention, and it's now in the arena of discussion. Okay? Thanks for coming down. Deborah, the Puerto story has a long way to go before the fat lady sings. There's a lot of things that need to be done, and all the things that you're talking about are kind of under the purview of the County of Los Angeles. Doesn't mean we don't care about it, and we're not interested in what happens there, but I think it's got a long way to go. And we are very aware of everything that's going on there, and we hear you. And thank you very much for coming down and bringing that stuff to our attention. Carol, thank you very much for your many years of service at the Public Safety Commission, sincerely appreciate you coming down and giving us the scoop, once again. Carol was my mentor when I was on the Public Safety Commission many years ago. Thank you very much, Carol. I went to my first Contract Cities meeting, convention, whatever it is, it's the first time I've been there. Annual conference, yes. And, you know, before Lou and Laura move on to greener pastures, they're trying hard, really hard, to groom me, gentlemen, it'd be nice if it gets some other guys to get in the grooming department, to assume all these positions on these things like League of California Cities and Contract Cities, et cetera. And it was a great experience, I actually went there with three objectives and achieved them all. And we did sit down with the Fire Chief, who was my boss and my other job, and we had a great conversation with him, he was very upfront about a lot of things. I asked him for if he could do one thing for us, and it looks like he's going to make that happen, and it's essentially a way for us to, in a numerical fashion, document how the impact of medical or drug and alcohol rehabs and sober living homes on our emergency medical services that we do here in the city, and help us understand what that impact is. It was a great meeting, I learned a lot, I think I'm ready to take over. I'm getting there, anyway. Let's see. Lou and Riva, I know that everyone said this, but congratulations on your victory in the sausage factory. That is, now, that is where you separate the men and women from the boys and girls, I guess, because that's the puzzle palace. I have briefly gone up there, and I'm definitely not ready for that, yet.
Just for the record, the mayor's talking about Sacramento.
Yeah, exactly. Sorry about that. Yeah, that's for adults, and I think I'm still in the kiddie league when it comes to that. We may have mentioned this in a previous council meeting, the next-gen thing is, if you hear the airplanes going over, we have not forgotten about that, in fact, we've contracted with, I think, we may have mentioned this before, but with a gentleman who was victorious against the FAA in a previous lawsuit in Arizona, to come up with a memo outlining various courses of action that we might consider to deal with it. It's, I know in Big Rock, it's a big deal, more so than the rest of the place, but everyone is starting to hear those planes all over the place, we haven't forgot about that, we are moving forward on it, and I will keep you posted. As Laura mentioned, we had our first meeting of the negotiations for the ultimate separation of the schools. It was very congenial, and I thought that it was, it went well, and I'm very cautiously optimistic that everything will work out, as we turn the negotiating process over to the city attorney, and the city manager, and the consultants. And I'm very much looking forward to a harmonious resolution of that objective for the long haul. Yes, it was Memorial Day weekend, and I have a lot of personal friends that are no longer with us when I was in the service, and it is important to recognize, not just those who gave their lives, but the families that are left behind. So, it's a solemn occasion, and it's something that we all need to do, and take a moment and pause, and realize that there are people who have actually paid the price, the ultimate price. So, that's good, and I appreciate you guys mentioning that. I think that's all my comments, that is all my comments, and we're on to the consent calendar. Do I have anybody who wants to pull anything on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent dollar and pulling items 3B6 and 3B7.
Okay, 3B6, 3B7, do I have a second for that?
I have a second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to 3B6. Okay, we got one speaker on 3B6. Graham Clifford, once again, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. As a member of the public, I would also like to thank the two deputies, Mike and Gordon, and also Jim, and all the guys, because they do such an incredible job, and I know, not just me, but many members, and women, sorry, Laura. But you all do such a fantastic job, and what you do for us as citizens on a daily basis is, goes far and beyond what the rest of us really do, quite to be honest with you. And I'm really appreciative of you, and I admire all of you guys enormously. Thank you. Yeah, so, I'm here to talk about the Newbury Park Tree Service, and I'm wondering, and I wonder why, and I've wondered this for a long time, and I wasn't going to speak on this, I just happened to notice it on the agenda when I came here. I don't know why we're not using local tree people, I mean, I think the city behooves itself to make an effort to hire local. Now, I presume it's because you, and there's always an RFP that goes out, and I'm assuming that the Malibu people who answer it maybe are too expensive, or maybe they don't answer it. I have spoken to tree people over the years myself, and they're never aware when the city puts out these RFPs. Now, that's obviously their fault, because it's up to them to find out, but maybe, you know, maybe it might be an idea to just notify, it's not like we're overwhelmed with tree people, but maybe the ones that can handle this sort of job should be notified that this RFP is coming out, and would they like to bid on it? And if it costs five bucks more, maybe we should hire them. I mean, money isn't everything, I mean, if it's a huge amount of money more, obviously, we're not going to do it, but, you know, I mean, I think we should hire local, and I'm not, and this, ever since I've been on the Parks and Rec Commission, as far as I know, we've been hiring outside people, not always Newbury Park, I don't think, but always people who are not in Malibu. So, I'd, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Graham. Okay, open up for discussion, I see you gunning for the microphone there.
I was just going to ask Rob or Riva to answer that question, and then I was going to make a motion.
Well, the current contract with Newbury Park Services ends in July, and we are planning to go out to RFQ this summer. We can, I can get names from Graham on who those are, send that information out to them so they can at least be aware of what they need to do to submit, so.
That would be awesome.
I just wanted to add that we do typically advertise our RFPs and RFQs in the local newspapers, so that's a good place for people to keep an eye out for, and also, if you go on the city's website, under e-notification, you can sign up to get notified whenever we list a new request for proposal, request for qualifications, and that happens automatically once you've signed up. So, just another way of getting information. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve item 3B6.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're on to 3B7, and I have one speaker, John Maza.
Good evening, I did send you a memo on this. Two years and three months ago, basically Lou brought up this safety issue with people parking and people getting run over by runaway cars, et cetera. And so now, two years and three months later, we're deciding, maybe we didn't get it right. But, that, two days from now, that ordinance is in effect, and these commercial businesses are supposed to have those in. So, now you're saying, well, let's postpone it, the way I read the staff report, let's postpone doing anything, but the ordinance is in effect. So, I think, and you may want to amend it in the future, but maybe that's two years and three months from now. In the meantime, if I was a property owner, and if I was the city, and somebody comes and runs over and kills eight people, who's liable? You have a law saying they have to have bollards in, you haven't enforced it, apparently you're not going to, and you're not revoking the law. So, January, June 1st, this law's in effect. So, I hope you could ask your attorney, what happens if June 5th, somebody kills eight people in front of Ralph's? Are you liable? Is a commercial person liable? Is the city liable? And when is it coming back, and when is it going to be changed? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Bonnie, want to bring us up to date on what this is all about?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Mullin and council members. The staff is proposing minor amendments to this ordinance that would make its application more practical for property owners. We're working with about, I believe it's around fourteen or fifteen different shopping centers. On compliance, one of the biggest issues has been finding an engineer to certify the structural stability, or whatever the term is, for existing structures. There's some additional flexibility that could be added to the ordinance that would make it more practical for these property owners to apply it. All of the property owners are actively working with us. All of the property owners are actively working with us on implementing the ordinance and looking for the, the best solutions. A number of them have already complied. The easiest way to comply is just to remove the seating. That doesn't work in every situation, but several of them have already complied, so I would encourage you to adopt the ordinance, to initiate these amendments, and I think we can get 100% compliance across all of the affected properties.
Chris, do you want to make any commentary on John Mazza's comments?
Well, just to say that, you know, our goal is to be safe, and that's generally the goal of all of the businesses and property owners. You know, nobody's sitting around playing game, well, you know, it's okay to let somebody get hurt because somebody else will have to pay for it. So I think everybody's head's usually in the game when it comes to trying to figure out the best way to make it safe, and I think the Planning Director's Center did a good job of, you know, getting as much compliance as we can within the structure we had, and now maybe we just need to relook at what's left over. But we, the city won't be liable for, not that that's the primary issue, safety is, but the city wouldn't be liable if we didn't enforce a rule in a way that would, you know, have an adverse effect on the city, I mean, on the business at the time.
And, you know, I'm, I'm obviously interested in this. I mean, it's something that I'm personally invested in. But I have talked to a lot of property owners, and a lot of them actually have, you know, done it on their own. And what I, I saw from the staff report and the discussions is that this is what's going to refine this law so that it actually works 100% of the time instead of part of the time. So whatever it takes to make it happen, then let's do it.
I would ask if the council would like this to go back to the Public Safety Commission before we bring it to the Planning Commission? If you would like us to get their input, or if you would like us to do it on a more expeditious basis and go straight to the Planning Commission?
It's up to me. I, I, just the most expeditious way. The Planning Commission has weighed in on it, and, you know, I know they're in favor.
May I make a motion to approve 3B7 and have it go to the Planning Commission? It does not need to go to Public Safety.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes. On to for Alpha. Lisa, you have the floor.
Good evening, mayor and council. We are here tonight for the public hearing on the proposed budget, and I think Parker's loading it up for us. And before we start, I do just want to thank staff, particularly Ruth Piamin, Renee Nierman, Joni Hand, Pamela Romani, and all the department heads who were instrumental in putting this together. And I do want to note that this version of the proposed budget reflects the revenue and expenditures through the end of April. Using the figures, we have further refined the numbers we presented on April 25th at our budget workshop, and it also reflects the $42.5 million land acquisition that the council approved on April 23rd. So it does look significantly different as we move forward. So here we go. So here's where you can see one of, a striking difference. The proposed budget that you have before you anticipates ending the current fiscal year with a general fund undesignated reserve of $32.2 million, or 102% of the annual general fund operating budget. This slide, and that's what we had in the last go-round, and, but what the slide now reflects is the use of $12 million in undesignated general fund reserves and $1 million of designated general fund reserves to fund the land acquisition in fiscal year 2018, 2019. So this will leave us then with a projected balance of $20 million in the undesignated reserve, and that would be a 66% reserve of our total annual operating budget. And that percentage is still over the council policy that requires a 50% reserve, and it also is a high enough percentage that it helps the city maintain the highest possible When we look at our general fund revenues in fiscal year 2018, 2019, the city anticipates receiving $77.5 million of revenue, including $31.2 million of general fund revenue. The difference between the two numbers is the land acquisition. Property tax accounts for 39% of the general fund revenue, and just as a reminder, the city's assessed property value is now $15.8 billion. Malibu's other major tax revenue sources are sales tax, utility users tax, and transient occupancy tax. Licenses and permits and fees for services are also, you know, significant sources of revenue for the general fund. And the overall growth in general fund revenues from the current fiscal year to the upcoming fiscal year is projected to be over $2 million. Property tax and documentary transfer tax are projected to increase significantly, and again, that's a reflection of the high-value homes that we've seen, you know, advertised in the papers as, as having occurred recently. Additionally, transient occupancy tax from both hotels and private rentals make up a large share of the growth. The general fund revenue and special revenue make up the bulk of our annual revenues. Grant and bond funds for the land acquisition account for the increase that you see here in the special revenue funds. The proposed expenditure budget is based on the council priorities and approved work plan. The work plan for fiscal year 2018, 2019 is attached at the end of the budget and details the city's priorities, which the departments will address collaboratively. Here, I'm going to highlight the, the few changes that were made since the April 25th presentation. So as I mentioned, we now have $42.5 million for the acquisition of the, just over 29 acres of land. Additionally, at the council's request, we increased the minimum wage for city part-time staff to $15 per hour. And when we presented at the budget workshop, we had anticipated that that cost was going to be around $95,000 to do that. We refined the numbers significantly, particularly with the community services department really looking at where part-time hours would be deployed, and the cost actually came in around half of that. So it was easier to incorporate. And finally, at the council's direction, we increased the general fund grant program by a total of $50,000. We had allocated, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, $100,000 to the Boys and Girls Club, and then we left $100,000 in the general fund grant program. A breakdown of total expenditures shows that this is, I think we, I'm going to go forward. Breakdown of the total expenditure shows that 47% of the total expenditure budget now will go to land acquisition, 22% to operating and maintenance costs, 12% to personnel, 10% to capital projects, and 9% to public safety. So again, you can see that in the coming fiscal year, the, most of our expenditures at this point will go to the land acquisition. When we look at expenditures by fund, I want to remind you that the city maintains a balanced general fund budget, which means that the ongoing operating expenses do not exceed the annual general fund revenue for the year. Ongoing operating expenses are projected at $30.4 million and are consistent with the projected general fund revenue amounts of $31.5 million. The total expenditures are projected at $91.1 million. The general fund expenditure budget is $44.9 million, which includes both the ongoing operating expenditures, capital improvement projects, and a portion of the land acquisition at $13 million. The remainder of the land acquisition can be found in special revenue expenses. And then additionally, we have smaller funds, including the Legacy Park Fund, which is budgeted at $2.2 million, and the Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility Fund, which is at $1.8 million. If we look at just a breakdown of the general fund expenditures, operations and maintenance expenses are at 40% of the total, personnel at 30%, public safety at 26%, and capital projects at 4%. When we break down the general fund expenditures by department, you can see that the city's largest general fund expense is public safety at $8.4 million, and it makes up about 30% of the total. This is followed by management and administration at $7.9 million, $3.6 million for ESD, $3.1 million for community services, $3.1 million for planning, and $2 million for public works. The ongoing debt service on bonds is not included in these totals that we left separate. Public safety continues to be one of the city's highest priorities. The city will spend $7.7 million on its contract with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department next year, and this includes the cost for the summer beach team, and the sheriff's budget has increased a total of 3.07% this year. Just to look at the land acquisition of $42.5 million for just over 29 acres of land, and I just want to call out that the annual wastewater assessment of $272,000 for the two properties that are located within the Civic Center has been included in the operating budget for this fiscal year and will be included in future years. The proposed budget includes $9.4 million for capital projects. Ongoing multi-year projects include the street overlay project, improvements to Pacific Coast Highway, and other Measure R projects. There are also clean water projects and improvements to city facilities, including electric vehicle charging stations and the solar carport structure at City Hall. The Civic Center Wastewater Treatment Facility project, which continues to be on track and on budget, makes up only $1.2 million of the capital improvement project budget. Phase 1 will be complete by September, so we're really just anticipating the final close-down costs of the construction contract before we begin to see the ongoing operations, which is included in the budget in a separate page. The proposed budget includes funding for 80 full-time employees, the equivalent of 13 employees working as part-time staff, and the equivalent of four employees working as student interns. Each year, the council awards funds to local nonprofit groups through the general fund grant program. At the budget workshop on April 25th, the council directed staff to allocate $100,000 to the Boys and Girls Club and to allocate another $100,000 for the grant program. The Administration and Finance Subcommittee met on May 1st to review the grant applications. Per the Subcommittee's recommendation, the proposed budget includes $80,000 for grants to 21 applicants. The Subcommittee recommended leaving $20,000 unencumbered to be allocated during the year, and just as history has told us, we do occasionally have people coming to us with requests in the middle of the year that have worthy causes that might need to be funded. The proposed budget anticipates a starting general fund undesignated reserve of $32.2 million and an ending reserve amount of $20 million. The total of all funds at the end of this fiscal year will be $42.6 million and projects an ending balance for next year of $28.9 million. The final numbers will come out on June 11th when we make the final budget presentation to the council, at which time the council would adopt the budget, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Laura, I'm hearing you say you have some questions. Go.
Thank you very much, Lisa. One question. When you talked about the revenue from the different sources, and it was 39% property taxes and 12% sales tax, and I apologize for not asking you this in advance so that you would actually be able to research this answer, but I actually had written it down and somehow had gotten lost last week. Do you happen to know historically, and maybe Riva would, because she did this before you did, if that's changed, I mean, are we getting more or less money from our property taxes and our sales taxes?
We're definitely getting more.
Well, I mean, I meant, I meant percentage-wise.
Yeah, so of the overall budget, in years past, the property tax was probably closer to about 41%, and sales tax was probably closer to about 10%. So you definitely have seen a little shift in that. Sales tax has continued to experience growth, so that's positive, and I think what's happened is now, while property tax is a larger number, it's a larger number of a larger number. So that's why that 39% has, has gone from 41, has gone, 41% has gone to 39%.
And then, I, I just wanted to, to point out, and, you know, maybe, Lisa, you can corroborate this or say, no, I'm crazy, because people, hopefully the former, people have said, oh, well, gee, our budget's getting very large, or we're, we have a lot of people working here. And I, I wanted to, I, I went through this very carefully, and I looked for our increases in staffing, and I, I found that a lot of the increases in staffing came from areas that were directly the result of constituent concerns and council concerns. Case in point, we don't have enough code enforcement. So now I think we have more code, three code enforcement staff members, whereas before we used to have one. So that was in direct response to our community and concerns. Obviously, one of the other areas is media services. We've really, when we started, when Lou and I started eight years ago, we did not have any. In fact, one of the things that Lou and I campaigned on and worked on was getting more of a media presence, being able to get information out, redoing the website. We had no social media at all. We didn't make videos, or very few of them. We didn't have alerts. We didn't do any, I mean, I'm just naming a few things. So now we have a whole media department, and, and again, that came from constituent concerns, and our concerns, which reflected that, to be able to get that information out there. And this also includes, we now have, we didn't have a wastewater treatment plant back then, and we also have a lot more storm, stormwater and water testing and laws and rules and things that we need to do. And as we've grown as a city and we have more programs that we offer our community, then that means that we, that we're taking in more money, and we need to have staff to be able to do that. Our community services department and our Parks and Rec inside of that has just grown by leaps and bounds, and that is all about our community. We didn't have a library speaker series, we didn't have a concert in the, in the bluffs, we didn't have a whole lot of things. I know a lot of people here, when, when my kids were little, we didn't have any city sports programs at all. It was all privately done. And we can look at all the summer camps and everything. And we can look at all the summer camps and everything that we have now. So I just wanted to point that out for a reason why we do have more staff and we do have a bigger budget. But it's not, it is a budget that we can afford. And then I did have some comments about the grants, but I'll wait until other people might have other questions, too.
Well, and if you want me to, I will absolutely corroborate that you are not crazy, and that is indeed the case. Because I've not been here quite two years, but certainly when I started, we had one code enforcement officer, and we now have three. Again, as a response to try and have a bigger presence in the community. Similarly, the, as you mentioned, we're, we have a much, we added a finance position because, again, we now will have a wastewater treatment facility and more, and ratepayers, and have to deal with, at some point, sending out bills for reclaimed water. Additionally, I would point out, in this particular iteration of the budget, the one position we asked, have included is a public safety specialist to assist our public safety manager. And again, that came from community desire to have a broader presence and more assistance to help with things like the homelessness issues and the various outreach that we're doing. And the good thing about that is that we have a funding source for part of that, so it's not even just coming directly out of the general fund.
I just wanted to add, I was, I had a list of where the areas of growth have been, so I was kind of checking off as you went through it. And I also just wanted to add that all of our sustainability efforts have also been an area of growth and obviously very important to the city and the priorities. And some of the examples of the programs, the, one that you didn't mention is our senior center. And our senior programs, since we've moved to this building, probably have quadrupled in attendance. So a really good example of a service that we're providing to the city. And then also all of our cultural arts programs above and beyond the library series. So I just wanted to kind of throw those in as well.
Is that it, Laura? Okay, we'll go back to the grants. Lou, do you have any comments?
No, I agree. But there's also one other thing that, we also now own a tremendous amount of land. And we have to, we had to buy it. We have to maintain it, and that we didn't have before. And now we're on the verge of, you know, another thirty-nine acres. It's a tremendous amount of land. A city that owned no land, now we're in the land business, and that's terrific.
Skylar, any comments?
I don't know. The city should always be in the commercial retail business as we are, but that'll hopefully play out very well in the long term. No, I don't have any questions. I mean, kind of looked over a lot of this stuff already, so I feel comfortable with it. I think that for some people in the community, they're definitely, you know, kind of gripping with how the city's, you know, acquiring its bonding and dealing with those kind of things. So I know that we're going to have further explanation on that. And thank you for delivering a balanced budget.
Jefferson?
I'm good, too. I did review it and it looked fair to me. And we're, we also have those assets that we can pledge against as well. So if you don't borrow and do bonds, you have property as value. And that seems to be the way to head for the next few years, especially from the perspective of the scarcity that we're starting to experience. So I was happy with that. Thank you.
Okay, Skylar?
And I would just add that I think, you know, in my time on the council and even the time before that, one of the things that kind of motivated me to run for city council originally was when people brought up these issues of development in certain parts of the community and how that would affect the community if that were to all be large-scale commercial development. And I think that this council as a whole has, you know, with what's in this budget and how, you know, that the more recent acquisition that we've pledged to make really shows how everyone's listening to their community and making that a priority. So I think that's something that's very, very important.
All right, thank you for those comments. And I was, I, probably like a lot of you, I got an email from Walt Keller, who's way back at the founding of our city, wondering if we created a monster that was out of control now. So I talked about that with the city manager before this meeting, and we were discussing, you know, how things have changed since the beginning. And if you could turn the wayback machine to the very beginning of when it became a city, maybe you could compare some of the figures from then to now to kind of put it in perspective for everybody.
Sure, I'd be happy to, Mayor. When we first became a city in nineteen ninety-one, we had an assessed value of three billion dollars. As the Assistant City Manager mentioned a few minutes ago, that value is now at fifteen point seven billion dollars. And I did take the time to pull out our first annual report, so our financial statements from nineteen ninety-one. We had revenue and expenditures in the general fund of four hundred and thirty thousand dollars and a fund balance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And today, those numbers are revenues of over thirty million dollars and expenditures just under that, at twenty-nine million dollars. And as you know, because we've discussed it at length as part of the land purchase, that our general fund reserves were at thirty million and will dip down due to the land acquisition. So we're looking at a very different scenario than what we had. And then, as Councilmember Rosenthal mentioned and Lisa also added to, we're doing a lot more as a city. And so that takes people and takes things to get that done. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And I appreciate sort of framing it in a historical perspective. But those comments are important from our city's founders, and they should be concerned if we're driving the bus into the ditch, so to speak. You know, the world has changed, and our mission is to make sure that Malibu doesn't change. And even though there are aspects to it that are changing, it's our mission to embrace the vision of the founders and the mission statement and to maintain the rural character and what's special about our town, and that is foremost and forefront in everything we do. There's a lot of money changing hands nowadays. But if we were spending a lot of money and hiring a bunch of people and running the city into the red, then I think that we would have a problem. But we've got an outstanding level of margin of safety, and we have excellent credit rating, et cetera. And it's put us in a good position to take advantage of some property acquisitions that will have a significant long-term effect on our city that is definitely right at the center of the mission statement. So thank you to all the money managers who've been running a tight ship, and I appreciate all the attention and detail. What's that? Yeah, keep paying your property taxes, by the way. Okay, any other questions? Any comments? Laura?
Sorry about that. I had a couple of, just questions about the grant. I think Skylar and Rick, you're on the A and F Committee now. So I just had, so one of them was the California Wildlife Group, and they asked for five thousand, but you gave them fifty-seven hundred. So I was just trying to understand, did they bring something when they came to your meeting that made you change and give them more?
I believe that when we were discussing that, it was kind of towards the end of our meeting, and what we thought would be, that was a better, that was a very good use of funds for the community was really the reason for doing that. I don't remember anything other than that at the time. That's why we'd have liked to give them more money.
Okay, so you gave them seven hundred dollars more than they asked for?
I believe that we did. Is that correct? Yeah.
And then also, I was wondering, the the search and rescue asked you for forty-three fifty for, I think it was some new equipment, Malibu Search and Rescue, and you gave them five thousand. So I was wondering if there was something at the meeting that they brought forward that they wanted more than they had asked for?
I think it was a recognition of the fact that they do an incredible amount of work, and they're there every weekend, and they're doing actual rescues left and right. And it's not sort of something that they want to get, that they might use in the future. They do real, no kidding, life-saving things every weekend. So it was a recognition of that.
Yeah, no, I think it, I, you know, I've supported them for years and years. So, I mean, it was just, it just reached out to me that they, that they were given more money than they asked for. So, so I think what I would like to do is ask for us to increase a couple of these organizations. I'll start with, which one? I'm going to start with Hand in Hand. So they start, I actually looked at the last four years for every organization that we've given money to, or every organization on this list, I went and looked at how much we gave them for the last four years. So Hand in Hand, in, four years ago, we gave them six thousand. Two year, last year, we gave them five thousand, and this year, you voted to get, or recommended, to give twenty-five hundred. And this is a group that works out of the Malibu Jewish Center, but they work with disabled and handicapped. And it's Malibu people. It is a really, it's run by Malibu people. It's just happened to be run there at the Jewish Center. It's not one of, you know, it's not their program. And I think that I'd like to see that increased back to five thousand to give them an extra twenty-five hundred because that is really one of the most valuable programs that I've ever seen in Malibu. And then I wanted to ask, also, the Labor Exchange had gotten thirty thousand and then thirty thousand, and then you had asked, you had brought it down to twenty thousand. And I think that, again, this is a very, very valuable community organization. A lot of people I know use them, and this actually, like, saves lives. So I'd like to ask for an additional five thousand for that. And then the Children's Life Saving Foundation has gone down from eighty-four hundred dollars down to seventy-five, down to five thousand. So I'd like to ask for another thousand for that. That's actually an organization started in Malibu, and a lot of Malibu people work for that. And then the Aurelia Foundation, they've gone down from five thousand to three thousand. Again, they work with Malibu residents, and I'd like that to go back up to four thousand dollars. So that would add a thousand. I think those were the ones. And then I just had a question about the Young Actors Project. About, they went from fifteen hundred up to three thousand. And I know that they asked for some really worthy upgrades to Malibu Playhouse to be able to, but I also know that they asked for it last year and the year before. And so I didn't know if they just never took the grant money and so need it now. So I just wasn't sure what that, how that was working in that one. So maybe, Lisa, if you have the answer, that, do you know if they used the money before? Or, I mean, it's a great organization. I just didn't understand why they'd ask for the same thing again.
I think my, my understanding was it's an ongoing project, that it funds the program, or was not funding...
Well, when you read it, it says that it's to upgrade the physical space to be able to use, to be able, for disabled and wheelchairs and stuff like that. So maybe something came up at the... See, one of the things that I think would be good to add going forward is whether the people actually used the money last year, you know, when they got it. Because I know sometimes they think they can use it, and then they can't, and they come back, which is fine. But it, you know...
We do require that. The grant agreement that every grant recipient signs and agrees to requires for them to provide us with a year-end statement. And we require that as part of the grant application if they've been a previous recipient. So we do check that.
I do know that in regards to the Labor Exchange, that they're also getting funding for a new trailer, which I think is separate than this.
Right, but that's from a grant.
Understand that.
That's not money coming out of our operating budget.
I understand. So the total amount that you want to increase is almost wiping out that twenty thousand dollars. So I just want to be clear on that, that we kind of structured this so that if there's other things that come along during the year that we can add to them. And I understand that, we're kind of all aware that this is a small part of the budget, but it's a very important part of the budget to the community and that we want to do right by that. I think that when Rick and I were discussing it during the meeting and following that, and we kind of went through all of the allocations and stuff, it was sort of, you know, where, on one hand, we kind of recognized that these are all things that go on in the community that the city can't do, right, that the city doesn't do, and that these are resources that we really want to have. And kind of looked at what are the most effective ones for the largest group of people as a part of that, and how, and then also wildlife as well. And I have no problem if you want to add that stuff now, but I just think that we need to kind of look at the larger number and see if we want to increase that number a little bit more and then reserve more of that for the future if we need to use it.
And I also forgot one, and I apologize. And I know that, that, I think that one of the things that we, one of the goals, you're absolutely right, was to fund programs that we don't necessarily do. And that's why I've been a big supporter of the Boys and Girls Club because they really fill a void in this, in this city that the city doesn't have the capability to fill. And I think that I would like to add, sorry, I'm adding again, but I also think that we can, if this takes up most of the twenty thousand, then we just allocate an extra fifteen thousand or something like that. I know, Reva, but I think that it's important. I'd like to be able to give a small amount, a thousand dollars, to the Dolphin Foundation because as a, they want to be an incubator to help other nonprofits in Malibu, not outside of Malibu, but in Malibu, help them develop and help them to become nonprofits and develop their work and plans and all of that. So I'd like to see, just for this year, give them a thousand-dollar fund to start that. And it's so that they can go forward and help other foundations here in Malibu. So I, you know, I'm interested to hear what other people have to say. These are just my thoughts.
I have, I'm very familiar with this. I was on this committee for a long time. And there's always a lot of people asking for incredible worthy things, and there's just so much money to go around. But I do think that we can afford a little bit more. And things like the Hand in Hand and the Aurelia Foundation, I see literally in my neighborhood the results of that on a daily basis. And that's Malibu. And it's the kids that are growing up in Malibu. So, and for what's coming along in the future, we'll find a way to, you know, to find some other money if something important comes along. But I do think if we, these people need the money now, it seems to me. So I would just suggest that, you know, we increase it by the twenty thousand dollars and distribute it, you know, kind of along the lines that Laura was talking about. I mean, it's twenty thousand dollars, and, you know, we're talking about a place that's got a fifteen-billion-dollar, you know, tax base. So I think we should do it.
Well, in the spirit of fiscal responsibility and in recognition of the fact that we, you know, were spending forty million dollars, we essentially approached this with the belt-tightening mindset, okay? And kept in mind the principle of what this grant program is all about, which is, for the most part, trying to help people jumpstart and get their programs going. Some of them, of course, need ongoing allocations. But the way we approached it was, this is how much we allocated. Let's build in a little flexibility and reserve, kind of like they do with the budget, you know, that we could use to shoot from the hip during the year for something that comes up. And we deliberated on each of these. And we took time, and we talked about it. And I'm comfortable with the figures that we came up, but if you want to discuss spending more money, we can do that. And I think it's, hang on, hang on. It's like, it's like you said, we're going to spend more time talking about this little peewee part of the budget than we will the giant part of the budget. But in the era of the belt-tightening, that's the way we approached this. We said, this is how much we're given. We'd like to build in some reserve. And we looked at everybody. And there isn't an organization on here that isn't worthy. And that's the way we approached it. And if anybody got less than they got in the past... And if anybody got less than they got in the past, it wasn't because they weren't worthy or there were some that didn't get anything at all. Doesn't mean that they're not worthy either, but, uh, we tried to approach this with the same level of fiscal responsibility that our fine city professionals who, uh, look at our money. And that's why we came up with this particular allocation.
A possible solution might be reducing the Boys and Girls Club because they never had the asset of the chili cook-off for a benefit of, of their coffers because that has always proven to be financially rewarding in the past thirty-five years. So now that the Boys and Girls Club is running that, um, they will profit from thirty-five years of experience and everybody attends the chili cook-off and they will, they will have heavy coffers at the end of that, I'm sure.
The Boys and Girls Club is not on this list anymore.
And, and I don't think that the Boys and Girls Club, you know, they should be punished for the fact that they found another way to make some money. Uh, it just seems to me that if we, if we've got twenty thousand dollars in reserve, let's use it. And if we act, if something else comes up over the year, then we'll all talk about it again. And this way, you know, these organizations that need the money now would have it.
I, I just, can I just say one thing?
Can I say one thing? Can I say one thing? Okay, I turned it off while I'm saying my thing. So did you add up how much the total is of what you want to supersize all these things in that list? Did you come up with the total?
I want to add for the people that are listening to this conversation that the, um, administration and finance listened to the, um, presentations from the organizations, but they only make a recommendation to the council. It is not, okay, this is what we decided. And I think that that's really important and I think that, uh, Rick is absolutely right. This seems, because this hits closest to home for so many of these organizations and for all of us, because we interact with these people, um, it's always the, the longest discussion and, but the, those are recommendations you've made. They weren't, um, final things. So if, you know, one of the ways we could find a little money is we, are, you, you gave out thirteen hundred and fifty dollars more than, uh, two organizations asked for. So that could, um, add to, we could add that to Hand to, Hand to Hand. Um, uh, an organization that we have cut around sixty percent of their budget over the last four, four years. And that's an, um, they used to get six thousand and your, you had recommended twenty-five hundred. So that might be, um, a way to find some of the money. And I'd be willing to cut down a little bit, some of the other, um, money that, uh, um, that I've recommended too. So I, you know, hear back from everybody else.
Oh, did you, uh, but is there a total of the amount?
I'll, I'll add it up.
Yeah, add it up. I mean, if, cause it sounds like what, where you're going with this is, let's not have a reserve, let's give the money out and that's, that's fine.
I don't think it's.
That's fine. Well, I mean, that's essentially.
I, I, I think that it's gonna be coming to adding up, taking that reserve of twenty-eight thousand and making it about ten thousand. And I don't really have a problem with that. Uh, I don't think anybody, you know, I think that, you know, Rick very diligently said, we looked at this as sort of a belt, belt tightening thing, but then also knowing that we're, you know, we're separating the Boys and Girls Club and that's sort of like a more of a line item approach, you know, one showing the, the city's commitment to the resources that that provides in our community for our youth. And especially with them adding the, uh, the Wellness Center and the counseling type services that are, those are just things that the city does, does not do and we clearly see the need for that in our community. So I, I'm.
Comes to, um, uh, ten thousand five hundred, if we gave a thousand dollars to the Dolphin Foundation as a starter, if we gave, um, sorry, uh, Hand to, uh, the, the, sorry, the, um, Aurelia Foundation, another one thousand, if we gave, uh, I'm sorry, it comes to eleven thousand. And one thousand to CLF, um, we can give five thousand to the Labor Exchange and fifteen hundred to Hand to Hand.
Is that a motion?
And that, so that would be, um, oh, sorry, that would be eleven, let me see, one, two.
Ninety-five hundred.
No, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fifty.
Can you read them again?
I think you missed the thousand for the Dolphin Award that's not written on there.
So the, yeah, the Dolphin Foundation as a thousand dollar, um, they're an incubator. So is that the one that you missed? No, so a thousand for that, a thousand for the Aurelia Foundation, um, a thousand for CLF, uh, so that's three thousand, five thousand for the Labor Exchange is eight thousand. And, oh, you're right, maybe you're right, maybe, I'm wrong. Uh, fifteen hundred for Hand to Hand. So Riva wins, Riva's right. So that's, um, less than fifty, less than fifty percent of the, uh.
So I, I'm, I'm comfortable with making that change at that point, but at this point, I don't want to increase the total amount of the, that in the budget. I wanna just make it that the reserve amount is not twenty thousand, the reserve amount is ten thousand.
Five hundred.
Agreed.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. Well, yeah.
So I'll, I'll go down the list real quick, okay? So we're gonna take the Aurelia Foundation from three thousand to four thousand. We're gonna take the CLF Children's Life Saving Foundation from five thousand to six thousand. The Malibu Community Labor Exchange from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand. Malibu Jewish Center and Synagogue Hand in Hand from twenty-five hundred to four thousand. And adding a thousand dollars for the Dolphin War, Dolphin Folks Foundation, which is not listed. So the total of that amount is ninety-five hundred dollars. So instead of it being eighty thousand, it's gonna be eighty-nine thousand five hundred with a reserve amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars. Correct?
Do you have a second?
Correct.
I'll second that.
So, so that, that's, that's a motion to approve the budget, but I don't know if there's other stuff that you guys wanted to go over at this point.
That's why I realized when I made that, that, I mean, I'll make the bu- the motion cause we need to, you know, we can discuss it anyway. Is that okay with you, Lou, that you seconded it? I didn't mean to say that the discussion was over, I apologize.
Is any more discussion? Any more discussion on the budget at all? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
For the record, I think we're still making like five hundred and twenty dollars a month.
Five fifty-seven.
And they're getting their money's worth out of us, for sure. Okay, so we're on to, is it Six A, I think?
Six Alpha.
Six Al- excellent, you're coming around on my way of thinking. All right, we have two public speakers on Six Alpha, John Maza, followed by Mary Ann
I sent you a detailed, well, not a detailed, a one-page memo on this. When we heard this at the Planning Commission, uh, quite a while back, it, it very quickly became very complicated. And the staff report was very simple. Let's have parking, basically, one pager. And I just wanted to point out that this is a really big change, really big change in the way we handle commercial. And the main reason for that is the planning staff has determined that a parking structure is not a building. It has no FAR, it's just not a structure. So, for example, the Wave property, you can have five levels of parking under our height limitations, two, two below and three above. And that would be a two million square foot structure. Okay, you're talking tens of thousands of cars. Uh, so, and, and other factors come in, for example, when we considered changing the institutional code, we went through a big process of studying what it does to residences that are adjacent to commercial properties. And most of them are. Most commercial properties do have residents adjacent, except for parts of the Civic Center. So, um, then there's the factor of, wh- are these spaces used for outside of the city or for city use? For example, the Wave property could be used for the arena they're building. The, the property across from the tennis club could be used for announced international tennis tournaments. So we're talking creating things that we should study ingress egress on because do you really want ten thousand cars to show up at, at, on Stewart Ranch Road? So this is something that will take a lot of study and there's a lot of factors to it. So I hope, what I'm asking you to do is instruct the, the planning staff, number one, I hope you, uh, uh, impress that they should study their decision to make a parking structure, uh, not a structure. They are and they're big things. And do you really wanna line coast highway with big things? And, uh, create more, more ingress egress problems by right? So I know you have a problem with getting a grant to put in parking on the property you just passed. And it may be that you should split this and say, okay, let's pass a, an interim ordinance just for institutional property. And then study and do it right on the rest of the properties. Because to do this citywide, willy-nilly, uh, with this definition of, um, parking structures not being structures, you, you can create monsters very easily and they have to be thought about. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Mary Ann Riggins, you're next.
Excuse me, Mayor Mullen, could I just explain a little bit in response to Commissioner Maza's co- uh, comments? I think it might clarify things.
Sure. I mean, you're gonna have, uh, opportunity to speak at length.
We can do it either way you want.
Yeah, let's, we'll just do one more comment and then you can address that, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Um, you know, unfortunately, this is a necessary evil that we need in our city. We have numerous unsafe situations within our community and we need to provide community parking. I think that we should also consider this, not just on commercial properties, but we should also consider it on open space and institutional properties and being able to utilize some of those properties to help satisfy our needs on weekends and evenings when those properties aren't necessarily in use. I think the comments that Mr. Maza proposed, um, any development's gonna require some type of either municipal review or local coastal program review. So we're going to have either an administrative plan review or a coastal development permit required for the development of these. And I think, um, as part of the process, sending it down through the process of ZERACIS and then on up to the Planning Commission and on ultimately to the City Council, having design standards that are built into them that represent our community so that we can balance the attractiveness of any parking lots that may be proposed or built and also satisfying the very real need that we need community parking within our community for the fifteen million people and also the residents that want to enjoy our Civic Center. I know, living in Point Doom on the weekends, I don't wanna come down to the Civic Center cause I don't wanna deal with trying to find a parking place. And I avoid it as much as possible. And I think that that's just something that we've grown into, unfortunately. So I think that we can take the time to develop this and to be a very, uh, balanced and maintain our rural character for our needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Bonnie, you have the floor.
Thank you.
So, Bonnie, I think your mic works. Yes, it does.
Okay, you have the floor.
Okay. Well, good evening again. We are beginning work on the amendments to the local coastal program and the Malibu municipal code based on your initiation of amendments for the civic center area back when this was last year when you were reviewing the appeal of the Pepperdine University request for the WAVE property where they were requesting that parking as a permitted use be treated as a permitted use and no more objectionable land, other uses allowed in the community commercial zone. You agree with the planning commission that that needed code amendments, and so that's what we're working on now. Once we get direction from you tonight, the next step will be to take the take draft amendments or maybe just have a preliminary discussion with ZERACIS, followed by the planning commission, and then back to the council for adoption. So, like any other zoning code amendments, these will absolutely have to go to the planning commission for recommendation. So, I wanted to assure Commissioner Mazza that that will happen. So, we're looking for direction on three issues. One is the type of parking that we would address in the amendments. Surface parking only or parking structures as well. And then related to that, Commissioner Mazza's comments about staff making a decision that parking structures be exempt from FAR, floor area ratio, was not a staff determination. It's by definition in the code today that, based on the definition of floor area ratio and gross floor area, subterranean areas are excluded from FAR and so are anything, any structures related to parking. It's just by definition. So, it's not a determination that staff made. That's just what the code says today. So, part of the amendments can address that. For example, the, you know, development standards can be put in place that say that parking structures are subject to floor area ratio or some other type of limit so that they're not exempt. That's part of what this whole amendment process will determine. So, whether you want to address just parking lots or also structured parking is one of the things we're looking for direction. Secondly, I was looking for direction about whether you want to just address the zoning districts that include, that are, the zones that are applied to the three properties that you're acquiring, or if you would like us to address all commercial zones. And then the third item was an option about whether you want us to study contracts with a consultant to study the parking and circulation circumstances in either the civic center only or citywide. That's something that could be done, or we could just proceed with amendments either on, in the civic center only or just on a limited or on a citywide basis. So, that's what we're looking for. Our recommendation would be to address both surface and structured parking citywide in all the commercial zones so that you have the most flexibility in the future. But I'm happy to address any questions you have, and that's all I have at this time.
I have a question. I have two questions, actually. Didn't we just do a parking study just recently?
Are you referring to the PCH parking study? Yeah, that study was handled by the Public Works Department through a contract with I forget the firm's name right of this, Michael Baker? No. STAN Tech, that's right.
So, could we use that as a basis and just expand it for the rest of the civic center area?
It's a little bit different because our, the development standards that we're working on would be for private property or publicly. Actually, ownership isn't really the issue. It's just not parking in the right of way. We would be doing development standards for actual parking on lots as opposed to along the PCH right of way.
Okay. And the other question is kind of towards REVA. The grant that you're intending to apply for to help pay for some of this land, are any of these requirements for that grant, for the parking money?
I already forgot that they didn't work. Yeah, so the part of the funding that we'll be using for the land acquisition comes from Metro through Los Angeles County. One is Measure R, and the other funding source is Measure M. And in order to use those funds for a portion of the acquisition, there has to be a nexus to transportation. And the nexus that we've come up with would be that a portion of the properties would be used for parking so that people could park there and get on public transportation. So, we do have to have parking as an eligible use on these properties in order to use the funding.
Thank you.
So, if I remember correctly, when this was, when the park, I'm sorry, when the planning commission was looking at the WAVE property for parking, and that was something that the city and Pepperdine, who owns WAVE, had brought forward, one of the things that the, I believe that the planning commission had asked for was like a citywide parking or traffic thing. And I believe one of the responses from you and staff that resonated with me was, well, when they bring, when anyone brings a project, that's when you do the study because it's kind of hard to do a study when you don't know what you're studying or what the project is. Is, am I remembering correctly?
Yes, you are. That, one of the things that we can incorporate into the development standards would be submittal requirements and/or findings and analysis that have to be completed in conjunction with approving a project. So, we could even say that these types of parking facilities require a conditional use permit or they require an analysis of, you know, traffic or circulation, that type of thing. So, that can be handled as they come along rather than trying to I think a citywide study could be pretty complicated because it'll involve assessing, you know, parking lots on all these private properties and how they're utilized and things like that. So, yes, to answer your question.
And we could, I think what you said before is we could actually then say to address some of the things that John had brought up, that nothing can be higher than two stories or that you can't have one bigger than so-and-so or 20 in a row or, you know, all of those things could be put into this.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't aware that there was a in the Measure R funding contribution for the property purchase, if there was any kind of saturation level for parking. I would guess that you couldn't say one parking space would qualify, but you certainly would need 1,000 parking spaces. So, I would like to see in writing from the county and the contribution toward the purchase of what they were expecting because we're trying to come back to them. Or are they already have a prerequisite of how many parking spaces per million that they give? We don't understand that enough yet in detail, and that's one of the needs that we should know ahead of time.
So, when the council discussed authorizing the funding for the land acquisition, I apologize, I don't have that staff report in front of me, on April 23rd, I provided a breakdown of how the land was going to be purchased. There was an allotment from the general fund reserve, an allotment from the designated reserve, Measure R and Measure M funds, and then the use of bond funding. And in order to make the acquisition work, I had explained that we maximize the amount of borrowing that we could do. And so, I had to make up the rest of the needed funds, either from general fund, which we took as much as we could by lowering our reserves and still maintaining our credit balance. And that left us with about $7.5 million of funding that we needed. And Metro has agreed to provide us with those funds. They have provided us with a letter stating that so that that starts the process. And they haven't, we haven't gotten to the level of discussing with Metro how many spaces that comes out to. But what I did was did a calculation of the amount we needed, and we were short, and would then therefore have to allocate, you know, an acre on one property and an acre on another property or whatever that, I'm sorry, I don't have the actual breakdown in front of me to give you that. But we did go over that in April.
I kind of think, Jefferson, what you were asking there was that sort of the relation and how much parking Metro would require per acre of land and what they're willing to pay for.
Which is one of the determiners of the needs, which was mentioned earlier by one of the speakers, is if we can get away with a flat parking structure, why would we need to have a built structure? And that's my position is that if somebody wants a surface structure for parking, that's certainly a lot different than building structures from below ground and above ground. For me, that's a no-go for me.
I don't see a situation where they would require us to have structures. I certainly, in my mind, have always anticipated that this would be surface parking, and that would be what we would be able to provide. But if they've provided us a certain amount, which breaks down to a certain acreage, then they would expect that size to be used for the use. But I can certainly ask them further questions about that. But my understanding is it would be surface parking.
I was just, no, I was just gonna add that I also know that the county, you know, obviously assumed that, is agreeing to the role in this, you know, with some amount of reasonability in there. They're not, you know, looking for, we go and say, yeah, you can put parking on a flat acre, but you can only put, you know, five parking spaces. That's probably, you know, we're gonna have to be coming up with $7.5 million pretty quickly on our own. But I think that the important part of this, what we're supposed to do is give direction to staff tonight. So, I think that I, like you, Jefferson, like, probably wouldn't foresee us going off and having a planning commission that would be approving rampant, you know, as John mentioned, potentially five-story parking structures. I don't know how a parking structure is not a structure, but I understand that there's sort of some ramifications for that.
It is a structure. There's no question about that. It's a matter of what the definition...
For the FAR is. Yes, I understand that. So, I think that it would be wise for the, as this goes forward to zoning and the planning commission, I think it's important to look at it citywide because I know that there's areas, not just in the civic center, that have needs for it. That parking structures should definitely be included in any FAR requirement and should not be excluded. I think it's maybe different if the parking lies directly underneath the developed structure on top of it, separately, whether it's a separate or an attached structure that goes above ground. I don't know how exactly in the wording that you make the distinction, but I think in concept, that's probably something that would be of a lot of concern to the council is anything that goes more than one story above or even below ground because a concrete parking structure is a large mass. And so, I think that when we originally looked at this, we kind of looked and particularly at the WAVE property, that that was sort of looked at more as like a ground-level parking. And then we realized that that wasn't allowed in the use, and that's why we're now addressing this and had addressed it before. So, I think it's important to give the direction to staff that says we're okay with, you know, some reasonableness in this, but we don't want to be passing something that says you have a two-acre parcel, you gotta take all of those two acres and the FARs, you know, forget the .15 FAR, make a, you know, a one FAR and make it as tall as you want or whatever. Not as tall, but you understand what I'm saying, in concept.
So, in terms of the property acquisition and the requirement for parking, is this necessarily applied to all the parcels? Or can we make it specific to one parcel, i.e. like the triangle thing?
I guess I would just ask Kristi, like, right now, we could create a variance and allow that use within there, or no?
You guys are way into the weeds with that, not a whole lot of information, honestly. So, what we're, staff's looking for is kind of like a larger picture direction. And then they'll, you'll have an opportunity to reject all bad ideas. But I think they're asking for the opportunity to process them.
But to speak to your question, Mayor Mullen, if you wanted to limit it to particular zoning districts, just the three zoning districts that are, that apply to the properties that you're purchasing, you could limit it to those three zoning districts.
That's what I'd be in favor of.
That's what I'd be in favor of because that encompasses the properties that we're doing, and it's sort of incremental look, you know, instead of bringing the whole giant kit and caboodle into that. Comment on that, anybody?
I was just gonna add that I know that this conversation was originally started prior to us looking at this acquisition, but looking at it for a property that's owned by Pepperdine because that property had been sitting vacant for so long, and at the time we didn't have this other acquisition at play, and was looking at a way to have additional parking in that area. And the people that deal with the land, Pepperdine's property approached us, and we kind of approached them and said, hey, would you guys look at putting parking on here, really in terms of us solving a problem that the community had? That the community had a problem with parking, and they had a large vacant piece of property there. So I think that we should also look at that, you know, property as well, if that's something that we want to consider. Now, we can decide to not do that, but it would be probably prudent to have that option available.
Yeah, it is.
I don't, oh, okay, it is, sorry. I don't know.
Community commercial would be one of the zones.
So you confused me when you said the district-wise, so I thought when you said the district within the zone, that you could limit it and say, okay, I'm gonna make a district and just have these three properties within that zoning.
What I was meaning is that all of the properties that are zoned citywide, that are zoned community commercial, community commercial general, and commercial neighborhood, we would address development standards that would apply if someone wanted to do parking as a primary use on those zones.
Yeah, and of course, to allay the fears brought forth by Mr. Mazza, please ensure that, you know, what you come back with ensures that everything goes through the proper planning process and that somebody doesn't get to make a parking structure for 2 million cars or whatever the hell he said, you know, without having to go through the process.
I would just add to that, that I think it's important in there that you must make the distinction from anything that's multiple levels versus something that's just ground-based parking because I think that one has a much larger impact. And then back on something that we didn't really talk about, that's why really important is looking at traffic and those kind of things in association with that. So I don't know how you want to add that in there or what the extent of that is, but it's very important.
So it is mentioned here, and it's Part III, Additional Program Options. So so far for a motion, if we were gonna make a motion, we could say to planning, the recommendation that Type 1 of parking addresses, we will address it in surface parking only, which is A option. Part 2, A option only, and to continue with Part 3, to allow the public to opine and bring their comments in when we come to ZERACES. So if that's direction, then that's what I would propose as a motion.
Do I have a second before I get more comments? Yeah, okay. Laura?
Yeah, so a few things. So what, where would we find CV1 and CV2 if we took those out? Where are they?
They're in a number of different places, and there are some CV1 and CV2 parcels in the civic center area, also in, I believe, around the pier area, and then...
I guess...
They occur in a lot of different places.
So what would be the impact if we just did, you know, the first three CG, CC, and CN, and didn't do CV1 and CV2? I guess I'm asking for, you know, what...
It's maybe just a little bit less analysis, but probably not a big difference in the grand scheme of things.
Okay.
The main differences with...
Right, so, yeah, so it's, I mean, it's community visitor, or commercial visitor, one.
Commercial visitor serving one and two, and as you might remember, those are, the uses allowed in those zones that aren't allowed elsewhere are hotels and motels.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so I'm fine about just doing the first three. So the allow for surface parking and parking structures, the only thing that, the reason I would want to keep in parking structures is if you're looking at underground parking, is that considered a parking structure? So I wouldn't want to lose the ability to not have to see any parking at all someplace and be able to put it all underground. So if we say no to, I think this is what you had said, Jefferson, no to only doing surface parking, then we lose the opportunity to not have to see parking at all. So I'd like to be able to include that.
If you've been to the NAP building, you've seen how successful the parking building, the underground parking there is. And in this area that we're talking about, most of this, if you try and go subterranean, you're gonna be into a water table of some sort or another, and the stability factors, I'm not an engineer, but they're apparent if you go to the NAP building and you go down underneath there.
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you're talking about. I also know that it was built 40 years ago, and I also know, so are we just talking about the civic center right now? We're not talking about Point Doom at all, or?
Well, these properties that we're talking about, which started the conversation, were the citywide for the ordinance, but the saturate, the high-use areas are in the civic center area.
No, I know that, but I would hate to, let's say at Point Doom, the property that we are buying there, if it was possible to put subterranean parking there and not have to see any of it, I just would like to have that option and, you know, I don't like parking structures, but I do like subterranean if it, I understand in the civic center, it's a whole different ballgame, though I do think at La Paz, they had some subterranean, that the water table was okay there. So I just wouldn't want to have to take it away totally.
Right. The, what we would design is an amendment that says that if somebody proposed structured parking in one of those three zones, it would have to meet these, this, 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 this standard. It might have to have a conditional use permit, it would, and then the planning commission would decide whether or not to even allow the use if it met all of those standards. So we're not saying that anybody could put a parking structure anywhere. This is the very beginning stages where we would, you know, decide whether or not to even contemplate allowing parking structures under any circumstances. So I think it does make sense to allow it if that's what the majority of the council wants.
I mean, Jefferson, the issue that Laura brings up with subterranean, subsurface parking, if somebody has an engineer that can provide the proper system to make that work, I don't think that we, I don't really have an opposition to that. I see the challenge with the subterranean parking at an old building, but I don't think that that would ever be allowed to be done like that again. And again, what we're dealing with really here has to do with properties that are gonna be used solely for the purpose of parking, not with necessarily having a structure. Maybe they're combined and they have a building on them and a parking lot, or an oversized parking lot, which I think they would be allowed to do anyways. We wouldn't even have to do that. It's really looking at a property and saying, there's no building on it. I'm seeing some people shake their heads, but I don't think that that's correct at all. It's for looking at property and saying, you can just do parking, right, on that piece of property as a standalone use. That's how we're dealing with Metro, that's how, that's why this is in front of us right now. So just, so in terms of allowing all types of parking, you would allow for a surface or subterranean parking? Are you okay with that?
Well, my proposal did not include parking structures because I'm gonna, what we'll eventually see is use on top of that, and that's something so far in the future. We're asked right now to get this started. It goes to ZERACES and it comes back to the planning commission. I know there'll be a cleanup all the way, and if you want to take the long road and include parking structures, we're adding a year to this, at least, in, because you're, now, we're gonna be inviting the public in because the Additional Program Options include traffic circulation. So I just see this in the future as being an overuse and a burden upon the people that are in this area. So I only made the proposal, if I don't get a second, that's fine. I just said 1A, 2A, and 3A. And that's what was provided by the staff, and that's what I supported. And that's the, that's the motion I put forward, and if I don't get it, then I don't get it. That's how I'm leaving it.
And you did get a second, actually. Did you get a second? Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think the subterranean thing is something we should find a way to add into this. And the only reason I say that is if we're talking about a piece of property that's just for parking, the top of it could be landscaped beautifully, and you just go downstairs and never see anything. So I think we'll at least give the opportunity to discuss this because we're not building anything now, we're just really giving the opportunity to take it to the next level for the planning commission and everyone else to begin discussions. So let's do that.
And nothing says rural more than not seeing a lot of parking spaces if we can do it, or putting as much, you know, greenery, if it works there, and it might not work in the civic center, but it might work at Point Doom.
Create the possibility for parking underground. Whatever you put on top of that has to have the same load structures that another parking lot on top of that will be. So what we may be promoting in the future is underground parking with a beautiful landscape, and then 10 years from now, the landscape's gone, and we have parking on top as well. I'm looking into the future on this.
The motion is, and I'm gonna make sure that you understand this, Bonnie, it's 1A, 2A, and 3A. And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Or actually, do we do a roll call? Is that how we do this? Yeah, okay. So Skylar?
I'd like to add the amendment of subterranean parking.
Okay, so you'd like to do a friendly amendment? Is that the expression? Just subterranean, not parking structure?
Correct.
Okay, so you'd like to amend...
I'll second that amendment if it's friendly.
Well, we're discussing it. Okay, so what he has proposed is amending, considering, considering, in the staff report they're gonna do, to consider. Are you okay with that?
I'll get that accepted to get it passed.
And to clarify, that's subterranean, not a parking structure above ground, correct? Okay, so, go for it.
Again, I just wanted to talk about number three, the parking and circulation assessment citywide or civic center area. Again, I just hearken back to that previous meeting where the staff basically said, we cannot do a citywide parking and use and circulation assessment. I don't know how you do a circulation or any of those studies if you don't have a project. It's like saying, let's study, so Bonnie, maybe you could, I know you just spoke to that, but maybe you could speak to that again, or maybe it's...
So what we meant by Option 3A was whether you wanted us to conduct either in the civic center or on a citywide basis, an analysis of what the existing available parking is and how the circulation works and things like that, if that would inform the amendments as we're developing them. I don't believe it's necessary, but since it was, it has been mentioned in the past, I wanted to mention it now as an option, if that's something that the council wanted to pursue.
I think that we should make this something that is done on a project basis because there's no way that we can account for that.
I think it would be complicated.
Yeah, it would be very difficult to do, and...
Yes, and by project by project, you would, you could use one analysis for a project and then a separate analysis from another engineer for another project. So we might find an ultimate truth between all these players. And that's kind of what I'm trying to promote here, is that we get fair use of these properties. I understand the COIs that they need, the ROIs, but also remembering that people live near these properties, and they're also to be considered.
Okay, so to clarify, his motion is 1, be modified to include subterranean but not parking structures, 2, A, and the whole 3 is essentially that would be done on a project-by-project basis, correct? Everybody in agreement?
Yeah, so we're not, we would not be conducting any sort of study in conjunction with the amendments themselves, it would just be built into the standards that each project would have to provide a study.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Laura's sharing her mic with me. Can everybody hear me? Okay. So we are on six Bravo, and we have some public speakers. Let's see, six Bravo. Carol Moss is number one, and you have four minutes, and you've been given your minute by Robert Prower, and then John Mazza will follow.
Well, good evening, mayor and councilperson, staff. Is this better? I'm here to speak to the issue of the contract renewal of our city manager. I have no problems with salary, I think we've got plenty of money in Malibu, I think a good manager is worth every cent. I am concerned about the controversies that have swirled around job performance. These opinions don't seem to be totally frivolous because I'm, I hear from City Planning Commissioner Steve Euring that the city failed to review construction projects on CPH, and what is more impactful for all of us than PCH? Now, there may be wonderful reasons for doing this, but we have to understand this policy, where it comes from, how it was arrived at, what it is. So what do we do? Don't we owe it to the council and to the staff to find a better way, if there is one? Malibu is a huge brand, and what we do makes news. Let's not appear tone deaf as appeared with the USC debacle, which was so horrible recently. But instead, let's take our civic responsibility seriously, let's wade into this, let's appoint someone from the outside to examine our controversies. That would entail postponing the contract, but that's not a big price to pay for civic What is the downside? If we lose some time, we lose some money, but we have both. So please give this some serious thought. I once served on a board like yours, but I was, we were appointed, not elected. I was young and dumb, it was heresy to second-guess a staff member or a sister agency. I'm horrified when I look back on my performance. You are neither young and dumb, you can do better. So I urge you to consider bringing in somebody from the outside who's impartial, who's respected, to review all this, and give us, give our city some rest, some peace, some credibility, and some help. And this is for the sake of everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next is John Mazza. John, is he here? No, John Mazza. Okay, that concludes the public comment. Kristi, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening again, mayor, councilmembers. I think we covered the procedural part earlier in the meeting, so now we've, before you is the substance of it. Right now, the city manager is operating under a contract that goes until May of 2019, and the current salary is $225,000 a year plus benefits. The contract, as you know... The contract, as you know, is terminable at will. There are provisions to, for either party to terminate the contract. If the city wanted to terminate the contract with cause, there would be no severance, and without cause, then there is a severance payment of six months' salary, which is typical in, among city managers, pretty standard, especially in Los Angeles County. What's before you tonight is a proposed amendment to that contract that I just described. It keeps in effect all of the terms of the agreement, including its termination provisions, but changes two things. It extends the date from May 2019 to, the term to May 2022, and it increases immediately the salary from 225 to 242, and then each year, based on a positive performance evaluation, the opportunity for the city council in an open session like this to increase the salary to 248, 254, and then ultimately 260, starting on May 3, 2021. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Lou, I see you moving to the mic.
I'd like to make a motion to accept these proposed amendments, the way they're written.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Is there any discussion, anybody, any comments anyone would like to make?
I was just gonna ask, and seconded for discussion, if Kristi could shed a little bit of light on the wage of city managers in other cities, and how that sort of plays into how we got to this. Because I've heard some criticism from some folks in the public about the amount of money, and just wanted to make sure that people know that it's comparable to some of the other surrounding cities and whatnot. Because that, I think that that information's just important for the public to hear.
Just looking to see if I had brought the file, but I don't have it. The council was provided with information about what all of the surrounding city managers were making, and also what city managers are making in other comparable cities. And this information is also available to the public through the California Transparency website of the treasurer, or the Heather? Do you know it? No? I think it's, I think it's the treasurer, but it's on, there's a state website, it's very easy to find, which has all the information, including benefits. And so this, I would say that in the end, Malibu city manager would be a well-paid city manager, but not the highest paid, and certainly relatively comparable in our watershed and among coastal cities.
Lou, thank you.
I'll get closer to Lou. Maybe I won't. Carol, I just wanted to thank you for coming, and I'm not quite sure when you say "review all this" and "credibility," because I think one of the things that we actually have a lot of in this city is credibility. I think within the city, I'm not saying every single person, you're never going to please everyone, and there's always going to be conspiracy theories, and there's always going to be everything else, but Rick spoke earlier about some of the organizations that he is now joining, that Lou and I have been a part of. We spend a lot of time, whether it's county commissions, or they're statewide organization, or regional organizations. And I hear a lot about the job that Riva does, not only for our city, well, it's ultimately for our city, but it's for some other organizations that she's on the board of, or she participates in, and the exemplary job that she does. That's not to say that people don't make mistakes, I make one at least once a day, everybody does. We're always striving to be better, and I know that that's actually something that Riva always tries to do, and I hope that we, that all of us do that, strive to do better. But I think our credibility is A-OK, and that if there are certain issues that need to be looked at and reviewed, let's do it. But I don't think that there's a problem about needing to hire anybody from outside our city to do that. I think she does an excellent job, and I think that's what came through and why we offered this salary increase and the additional contract. So I just wanted to respond to that, and thank you for coming and speaking.
I would also just add that, you know, when we originally hired Riva to come and to take the role of being a city manager, that we weren't really, you know, we didn't know, because she hadn't been a city manager before, because she had been the assistant city manager, and she was taking the role of somebody that had been in that position for a long time. And I think that, to me, I can just say that she's really lived up and exceeded my expectations of somebody that would be in that role, and that's why I support her. So...
Oh, go ahead. There you go.
Yeah, I'm on now. It's a difficult situation when you deal with people directly face-to-face in a confined area, whether it's an office or a city hall. And I've spoken to Riva directly about some of the concerns that the community has, and I've voiced them with her. In fact, in the last evaluation period, we did discuss that face-to-face, some of the issues that we had that were pointed out by members of the community. And I had my position, which didn't necessarily have the same outcome as other council members at that time. And in this same situation, I do grant that, and I understand, and I have seen that Riva does some really good work. She did fine work on the park and with the treatment system, and when she has complete control of it, quite often that turns out to be very successful, and I thank her for that. However, down rank, sometimes she can't keep some of the departments working as well when you reduce counter hours from 48 to 25. I hear from a lot of people how difficult that becomes, and if you call that more efficient, the actual ones coming up to the counter, don't call it efficient. But because they can't say anything, because they may be hampered if they express their opinions, they come to somebody like me, and they say, "That's something that I can't work with." When somebody has a project out for five to 10 years at a crosswalk, and a year or two later, after the proposal starts, there's a crosswalk work starting, for me, that's an issue, and it's been expressed deeply throughout the community. So I still have to work with Riva for the next two and a half years, and she understands that my position represents a lot of people in the community, and that I had frustrating moments, but I was not in favor of the renewal of the contract at these amounts, and I'll express that in the vote. Thank you.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Before we go to that, let me make a few comments. The city manager's essentially in command of the full-time staff of the city, it's a very important job. We all recognize that it's probably the key position here in the city. Our job is elected representatives of the people, and to look out for the people's welfare, and to see that their money is being spent properly, and that their desires and their priorities are being fulfilled and executed is part of our evaluation process. We also have to look at, see what other cities are paying their city managers that are, I would say, comparable in size and close in location. And we did all of that, and we looked at it. Another thing we have to think about is, do we want to keep our city manager? And if we don't want to pay her enough to keep her around, there are plenty of other cities, a lot of which know about her, because they've dealt with her as the head of the city managers of the League of California Cities, that would probably just love to hire her away. And all of that stuff figures into our decision-making process, and that's what went into the evaluation and consideration of her contract. So it was a deliberate process, where we evaluated her performance, based on the priorities that were set forth by the council. We examined the compensation of like-cities in this area, and in comparable types, of course, no city is exactly like Malibu. And we figured, is she doing a good job? Is she worth the money we're paying her? Do we want to keep her around? And that's how we came to the conclusion that we did. So we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All against?
It'll be aye.
Motion passes. And we're now on to item 7 Alpha, which is pesticides, herbicides, rodenticides, and insecticides. Councilmember Peak, and I do have one speaker, Joel Schulman, and he gets four minutes, so long as John Maza's here. Oh, you've got one, too?
Pat has given her a minute.
Oh, you're gonna give her a minute. Well, I have, I have no speaker slip for you. Do we have a speaker slip for-
Why don't you come up to the mic, Joel? And then, Pat, you can go, just make sure you go on the slip.
Yeah, go sign in, and Joel, you got the mic.
Mayor, if I may, I just brought this item for, before council, because, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, and I guess we can go to public comment.
Okay. So Joel, you have three minutes, because John Maza's not here, so you got three minutes. All right, you got it.
Skylar, thank you very much. Oh, handled. I hear it, thank you. Skylar, thank you very much for bringing this up. You are the one who started this off, it was about three and a half years ago, with the LCP amendment to restrict rodent poisons and other pesticides and toxic chemicals. And thank you for not forgetting about it, we haven't, and it's great to bring it up, to talk about it now today. We have been working behind the scenes, as most of you know. We tried hard with a assembly bill with Richard Bloom. We passed one committee, but we did not pass the second. However, we came out stronger, we've made some really good alliances, and we're gonna try again with more resources and with greater knowledge. So we're gonna try again next year. What we need is this kind of local activity, that's what inspires the legislators. So local effort, it goes in parallel with the state effort, they reinforce each other. The easiest thing to do, the no-brainer, is this LCP amendment that we worked, that Skylar introduced several years ago. It's very, very well-established, the Coastal Commission even recommends it on its own website, for an LCP to incorporate clauses regulating pesticides. Furthermore, Santa Clara, I'm sorry, Santa Cruz County, for example, has restricted pesticides in its LCP since 1994. Malibu has restricted herbicides and insecticides since 2002. You all know about, Los Angeles County passed its regulations in October 2014. No problem in any of these cases, it's the easiest thing to do. We are now working with Ventura County, who is revising its LCP, and they have some really great clauses in there also. No problem at all. If you look at the law itself, the preemption law, that stops localities from regulating pesticides normally, without the Coastal Commission blessing, it actually has a clause in there that was put in several years after the original regulation, kind of making it virtually impossible for there to be any legal liability. They did this on purpose, because they did not want the pest control industry, did not want the legal process interfering with their, with the preemption, preemption stopping localities from passing regulations. In other words, something the pest control lobby put in itself is, works to our benefit in this case. There is virtually no legal liability possible in our action. I can go into more detail if you want to hear about it. Laura, do you know what Skylar has put you up to with the League of California Cities? This is a tremendous idea. Fran Pavly tried to stop and kill preemption in 2005. It failed. It needs the League of California Cities, that's the best way to do it. We should fight preemption in that way, we'd love to help you with that.
Thank you very much, Joel. Pat, did you fill out a speaker slip? On your honor? All right, good. Yeah. I've been admonished by the city clerk about getting my paperwork in order, so make sure you do that. Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilpersons. Tonight I'm speaking for the Malibu Monarch Project, and we- Oh, is it on or off? What do I do? I'll speak into it? Okay. That's important. Okay. Tonight I'm representing the Malibu Monarch Project, and we support Skylar's item. Rodenticides, pesticides, herbicides, insecticides are all toxic and harm living beings, including humans, pets, wildlife, our pollinators, including our bees, butterflies, and bats. There are non-toxic solutions to all of this, and it's time that we change our way of looking and living in a toxic world. So Skylar, I want to thank you for putting this forwards, and the Monarch Project thanks you, too.
Thank you very much, Pat. And we do have another speaker, Norm Haney. You're next.
Thank you, Chair Mullen, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this topic. Unfortunately, I've seen animals die when people have used pesticides, and it's a terrible death. They flop around, they bleed from the mouth, and then an owl will come down and eat them and have the same type of reaction. To say nothing of bobcats, mountain lions, coyotes. So I'm 100% in support of this, and I want to thank Skylar Peak for bringing it before the city council, because I think it's really important to make sure that we protect the animals in our community, we share our communities, rural residential communities, with the natural environment, including the animals. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Norm. Skylar, would you like to say a few things about this?
Mayor Mullen. So a couple different parts to this item. The first thing has to do with requesting councilmember Rosenthal to gather, garner support in, making this part of the issue that the League's Environmental Quality Policies Committee will take up. That may be something in the future that, you know, I may be interested in a role in that capacity in there, you know, providing that support for that. I think it's something that, you know, in talking with Senator Stern, and again, you know, Joel and Keon and their, you know, commitment to this issue is not something that I would be bringing before, that it wasn't for the public that brings this kind of stuff to me, and Rick, and all of us that are up here. So I think it's something that we can be a leader on in bringing this to other cities that are probably, you know, part of the League, that do deal with this issue, but maybe aren't as aware of it. So that's one thing I hope that the council would support. And then, the second issue- And then, the second issue deals with the LCPA. And we, Christie and I have spoken at length about it in regards to state preemption. I've spoke with Senator Stern's office, Rick. I've spoken with, we had a meeting with myself, Rick, Christie, lead counsel for the NRDC, some other community members. And I know that there's some area within preemption that may caution some things in regards to moving forward. However, I think it's important for us to move the issue forward, to let that issue, if it's going to fight out, if someone's, if one of the manufacturers of the chemicals is going to come after this city and say, "We want you to be able to use these things. You can't stop the sale of them, and you can't have any regulation over them at all." Let them fight that in the court of public opinion, and they will lose. They will lose in the state and they will lose in this community because people are done with the poison. And I think it's our time to move forward with that LCPA. That's why I brought it before us. I say that sort of, you know, it's, I think that we have a really good, we have the best city attorney, and she has great advice for all of us. And I really feel on this one that we can take the county's lead and other jurisdictions' lead in saying, "This is environmentally sensitive area. We know that it's already in our LCP. We just want to make it more concrete." That's it.
Thank you, Skylar. Laura, you're sort of being tasked here. Do you understand your mission as you go forward?
Oh, you turned it up. So, yeah, I think that there's some part of a misconception about the policy committee. So let me, when I saw this last week, I was a little surprised. But, and so I've spoken to, each league policy committee has a lobbyist that works for the league, and that's who we work with. So I've spoken to them. We were actually doing agenda planning. My last meeting of the year is next week. So, and basically, what we spend most of our time on with the policy committees are looking at legislation that is going through, that different legislators have brought. And so we will look at ones that, and environmental quality is everything from wastewater, I mean, water issues to some park bonds to solid waste to, I mean, it's huge. But just to give a little background, around three years ago when this first came up, I did lobby, this is when I was, I've been a member for around four or five years, I did lobby the chair and the former lobbyist for the EQ committee to try to get this on the, on agenda. There was no legislation at that point, but I thought that it would be something important for us to look at some policy about. And basically, I was told, and I'm still being told this, that it's, there's not a whole lot of interest throughout the state in a lot of areas except for ones that have a lot of either wildlife or mountains or, you know, the more urban areas don't have the interest in it. And so after that, a few years ago, I kind of let it go. And we also worked with the, Christie, who am I talking about? The director of the—
The Secretary for—
Natural—what? For, the secretary for the director in Sacramento of the agricultural or whatever it was, the, whatever. And we had gone and spoken with him, because I, Fran Pavly, when she was in the assembly, tried to get a bill passed, and she kind of narrowed it down to just Ventura and LA County, where we, you know, we care a lot more about this and couldn't even get it past the agricultural committee. Now, that was a number of years ago, and times have changed, and a lot of good work has been done by different organizations. So, and we got, and this was after the county had passed their LCP. And we couldn't get the director in Sacramento to put something in writing to say, "Yes, the Coastal Commission has the ability to okay a change in state law for this." We couldn't get him to put it in writing, and that's what Christie really felt and the council felt we needed at that point. So, coming back to now. So basically, we look at different bills, and so when we had our meeting, we meet in January, April, and June. And if there's a need, we will meet right before the league annual conference in September. So I had asked in April to have Richard Bloom's bill, which was looking at banning some rodenticides, I think it was, something that I know that you had worked on, and we had actually, I had brought to this council for us to support the bill. I had asked to bring that to our policy meeting, and then Richard, unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, he knew he didn't have the votes in the committee, so he pulled it. It didn't go down in the committee. He pulled it because he didn't want it to go down. And he's working on amending it, and Joel, you probably know more about that than I do. But I know I've spoken to Richard about changing it. So, so we didn't have a bill to bring to us, for us to discuss. And what we do is we discuss the bills, and then we make a recommendation to the league board whether the league as a body wants to support or oppose, or oppose with amendments or support with amendments, and on and on. So, to make a very short story long, what I can, what I think the best thing to do, and this is after talking with our league local rep, Jeff Kiernan, as well as our lobbyist, as well as my co-chair, is to, what I will do is I will bring this up at the beginning of my meeting. It is not going to be on the agenda because it can't be on the agenda because there's no bill. And I will ask for support from other cities that this might be an important issue. And then, what I can do is, you can bring a, sorry, and I have this on my phone, that's why I keep looking. You can bring a conference resolution, and we have until June 22nd to garner support, and I need to get fi, I believe it's five other either city councils or elected officials to support us in getting a resolution on the September conference agenda. And what will happen if we are able to do that, and I'm sure we can, even my co-chair, who's from Menlo Park, she said, "Oh, this is something important to us. I'll write a letter also." So I don't have a concern about getting support. So it will go on there, on the, it will become a conference resolution, and because it is an EQ issue, we will then be called to have a special meeting before the conference. It will be at the conference, but it'll be the day before. And we will be able to discuss it. And I would love to do that and would be encouraged to do that. My only issue is that I am not at all confident it will pass the committee. And my understanding, at least from the people I've spoken to, is that a resolution is never passed at the conference without getting a yea from the policy committee. And I say that because even though everyone on my policy committee is very involved in the environment and different issues, they also are probably, a lot of them are not very concerned about this, and there are also a lot of cities very cautious about the cost of banning all of these, especially pesticides and things like that, to be able to use at their parks. And the, I mean, the herbicides to be able to use at their parks. So one of the things that I think that I'd like to do is, I mentioned a couple of meetings ago about the raptor study. So I'd like to be able, that they did in Ventura, and thank you, Christie, for reminding me of that, because that showed that raptors were actually more effective, at least with the gopher population and things like that, than using rodenticide. So I want to be able to work this a little bit. I will work with our staff to get something together so that we can have the resolution and get other cities. I think that we all support it, and we're going to pass something to say that we, that we would support a resolution hopefully tonight. And then I will work on getting five other cities because that will be more effective than just us doing that and getting people from other cities. But I just wanted to let you know all this background because it's a little bit different than what you're asking me to do. Okay, does that make sense? And now I'll be—
It does. Totally makes sense. Thanks for laying that out, Christie.
Can I just jump in real quick and just to increase your success at the policy committee level? Suggest that in addition to calling for a ban, that you say, in the alternative to lift the preemption in the statute and allow local control, because that tends to be a real unifier in all of the committees.
Yeah. Sorry, I didn't mention that. I just have to find out if that's something that would be appropriate at our EQ meeting or that has to go to a different policy committee about dealing with preemption.
No, it's definitely, it's a, it's a environmental statute. I mean, I think you can—
It's only environmental?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Then that's even better. Okay.
Well, it sounds like you've got some guidance through the sausage factory there at the key moment. That's actually, that makes it palatable, I think, for all the other towns. If you, essentially, you're not saying to them, "Hey, everyone's got to ban it." They just, they can make their own decision. That's good. Luke?
And what Laura tells you is exactly the way to do it. I mean, I've got a lot of experience with those resolutions, not only with the league, but with the National League of Cities. And if you build up a layer of support to start with, then you build a wave that ultimately is, you know, it's impossible to stop it. But the real problem is, you know, I've been a member of the League of California Cities for a long time. I've been on the board with the National League of Cities. I was president of California Contract Cities Association. All of us were doing one thing, which essentially was fighting for local control and fighting against preemption. And preemption is a problem from Washington, right to Sacramento, and right here. And that's really the issue. And, you know, what Laura's going to do is we'll give you a strong resolution. You'll actually be able to back it up and get people to support it. But the preemption part of it is almost impossible. And somehow or other, people like Richard have to just keep going back. Because the first time we tried with a rehab bill with Richard, he couldn't get out of appropriations. And we changed it, and we went around it, and we found other ways to make it happen. And that's the only way it's going to make a difference. We could pass a local coastal plan amendment, and, you know, then we'd be the nice big target for all these people with incredibly deep pockets. Man, if they could beat Malibu. And they can always portray us, which so many people have, is, you know, is this rich little city along the coast that just wants their own way, et cetera, et cetera. I fought that battle in Sacramento for eight years until we finally became, you know, a player in the cities. And so I don't know if that's going to get us what we want. What we have to do is try to, you know, and—
Work on the state.
We have to work on the state level and move forward that way. This, it's the only way that you're going to make this happen. Uh-huh. I mean, Joel, I was the first council member six years ago to bring this up. And, you know, so I feel strongly about this, and I know how much, how much progress you've made over the last several years in lining up so many cities and counties, because it's so obvious it's the right thing to do. But there are forces that are stopping the state legislature from agreeing with this, and we have to change their minds slowly but surely, but we have to do that. And that, I think, is our solution. We all know that this is the right thing to do, and, you know, Laura getting other cities to sign on brings it a little bit more obvious to them. But I do think you may have an issue with that. But, yeah, that's, we need to try that.
So I think the other part of that, Laura, that you were kind of hinting at during that is making sure that whether it's Richard or in our state, on the senator's side, you know, presses on with this and gets something done, gets a bill done or in there, because that's how your policy committee is going to be able to deal with it. All right? I think we very much understand that, and that's kind of marching orders for the council and the public and the folks that are spearheading this thing. That's where the focus has got to be, for that element of it.
Right. And, you know, we can discuss policy if it's around, you know, a legislative issue. So I think that the bottom line is that, and I think that this is, Joel understands this better than any of us, is this has got to be a statewide campaign to, because it, you know, it's going to be too hard city by city by city to get this changed, and because of all the issues around the state law. So I think that bringing this as a resolution, getting something written up, I will bring it next week, ask for other cities to get letters of support. Maybe we can write a letter that then I can give to other cities that will make it a lot easier for them to just do it. Or not even just, it's harder sometimes, as we know, to get on a city council agenda, just to get the specific council members on my committee. And there are, you know, between 60 and 80 people on there. So I will work hard to get that, and then we will get it on the, get a resolution on the first September.
That kind of deals with the first part of this item. Are we all, do we have consensus on that? Now, the second part of this item has to do the LCPA. I think we should push forward on it because I think it makes the issue something that's out in the public, that makes people talk about it. And it's something that I believe that the county did, and Ventura's looking at doing the same thing. And that's where I think that the city should do. It's a process. It takes a bit of time. Based on how slow Sacramento goes and how government goes, I don't see, you know, it would be, I would be very surprised if we had an issue that came back, that something got passed through the legislature and some preemption element of this was lifted in 12 months from now. This would be unrealistic. I recognize that. I recognize it could be a five to 10-year process. But in the meantime, I think we can do the LCPA and get forward with that. Christie's giving me these eyes of reason, but not, not in a negative way, just saying that, you know, you're pushing the envelope on it, right? And I think it's, I think it's important for the city to do that because I think we're setting an example for the rest of the state and part of the world. That's where I'm at. So, curious to hear from you guys.
Thank you, Skylar. Christie, you want to say anything? Okay. I guess you've said your part. Luke?
I really would like to, you know, at least tell us what your objections are because I, let's make them a little more public.
Well, there's a express preemption of the sale and regulation by cities of pesticides, which is, you know, problematic. I know I've heard Joel's theory, and I've looked at it closely. I'm not surprised that the Coastal Commission has an exaggerated view of its own jurisdiction, but it's not something I share. So, you know, it would be difficult, the, the, the hard part would come in enforcement. I don't know enough about who is using the, this that we would enforce against to tell you, you know, how that would shake out, but I don't believe that it's enforceable as is. I think we need a change in Sacramento. It's the same problem we faced with the sober living homes. It's just the legal reality. And I'll leave it up to you. I think, you know, you take an oath to defend the laws, and you're constrained by them. And it's, you know, you are not at the, you know, when it comes to state laws, they can preempt you. You can do everything else, but not what state law tells you you can't do. So I had, I don't like that conclusion, but that's, I think, the honest one.
So what do you think has been, why hasn't anyone challenged LA County or Santa Clara? Is it? Santa Cruz?
Because it's never been enforced.
Because they don't enforce them so that—
It's never been enforced.
So if somebody has bait boxes out in LA County and somebody calls their code enforcement or whatever department, they don't go out and do anything about it?
We should try that. Let's get a test case out there.
Come up and hold the microphone. No, hold, yeah.
I know nothing about Santa Cruz. They do have an actual ordinance in addition to their LCP amendment, specifically stop, if you look in the notes that I've emailed a number of times, Santa Cruz actually has a separate municipal ordinance. a separate municipal ordinance banning the use of rodent poisons and other pesticides in certain situations. So, there's an ordinance there. The LA County things will happen. I don't want to go into any detail, but we, we can talk to the people that we know there about what might happen there. I don't really want to get specific about it, but there could be cases coming up in LA County where it's enforced. And, and like I said, you know, the funny thing is, the, you know, the preemption was passed, I guess, the late 80s or something, a number of years after the preemption law was passed. The pest control industry lobbyist came in and says, "Well, this sucks, because localities are still trying to pass sneaky laws to get around it." So, the pest control lobby actually took it away from legal consideration on purpose. The advantage to us is, liability is basically a non-issue. The disadvantage is, it's really easy to step on us, and if you pass an ordinance that, that the Department of Pesticide Regulation doesn't like, it's over. They can kill it. There's no legal process. They just kill our law. So, there's no legal liability at all. So, why not just go through with it? This kind of thing has been done since 1994. Why are we deciding, when others have already decided it's okay?
Well, I don't think it's, I, I guess, it, it, it's more about, you know, if, I don't want to pass something that we're not going to enforce. I don't believe that that's useful. And I also don't want the city to be liable.
No liability.
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't want the city to be liable for something if we pass it. And so, I'm trying to find a way to, to get to the other side to pass it.
There can't be any liability, because they could just stomp on their law. Without any action on our, on our part, the Department of Pesticide Regulation can nullify our law. It's right in the, I can read it to you. It's right here. It's, we can't, we can't enforce it, because they're going, they could destroy, they can wipe out the law themselves.
Aren't you making Kristi's case there?
His case.
I, I'm going to second it with the last paragraph. Because, were we up for a motion? Did anybody make a motion yet, or?
No one's made a motion. I'm just merely putting forth the question, I think that we should proceed to the LCPA. If you want to make the motion, I'll second it.
I'll make the motion for discussion, and I think it's a good idea, and I support it.
All right, what does that mean? That the, that the staff should come up with language?
No, it means that we should continue the LCP amendment process to amend the local coastal plan, adopting similar language that the county has, that would, in regarding to the pesticides, herbicides, rodenticides, and insecticides, and prohibiting the use within the city.
And so, let's go back just for a second to the, the whole thing. We've all agreed to do the resolutions by consensus. So, now we're just talking about the LCPA amendment. So, what exactly is the entire process for that? Does anybody, can you tell us?
Amendment. We're, we'll have a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission, and then one in front of the City Council. We also went through a process earlier, where they had a, a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission, and then we tabled it here. We could dust that off and see if that's still viable, and whether or not it has the exact language of the county. But, the better practice would be to just hold another hearing before the Planning Commission, then come here. And then it goes to, to the Coastal Commission, where it's likely to be approved.
Will we get a certain amount of due?
Yes. We can, but we can couple them. Yeah, so that's not an issue, really.
Does it have to go to ZERACIS first, or just to the Planning Commission? I mean, you know...
It can go to ZERACIS, but it doesn't have to. And the language that, that Councilmember Peak is suggesting, at this point, I believe, is just verbatim what's in the county LCP. So, there's not a, there's not, there's not a lot of discussion about what the language when ZERACIS would have.
I wouldn't see any reason for it to go to ZERACIS. I think it should go to the Planning Commission, and back to the City Council. And it can be coupled with any other LCP amendments that are going on at this time, or however that cycle works itself out. And we would, basically what this would hopefully do would be alleviating something like where we just had an issue with the MRCA, who did not spray in the county portion pesticides, but sprayed the entirety of the city's portion of where the road is. Merely, and said, "Well, the county doesn't allow it, and the city does." We were very quick to tell them that, actually, we don't spray that stuff on our property, and we appreciate it if you don't spray the city's property, which was that road with that. If we were to go to court, we understand that maybe something that would be difficult to deal with, but they're merely going, and same with the county, but they're respecting the fact that the county has passed that law through their LCP that does not allow it. So, what I'm trying to do is, would like to do that here. And that's something that can, you know, alleviate the usage of these items in our city, until the state gets their act together.
And, do, tell me a little bit more about, do you think there's a challenge coming up for the county ordinance, or the county...
No, I don't. I don't, and I think that it's, it's, if it was challenged, you know, it probably would have been challenged in Santa Cruz, where it's been law for 25 years? 24 years? Is that correct? Since 1994? So, I would have thought that the challenge would have already come there, or if the challenge would have already...
They're still selling it all over the county.
In Santa Cruz? I don't know if they, I don't know if they're, the city of Santa Cruz. I don't, I don't know the exact language of it, and I don't know that the county, whether the counties, I don't know if the county even has any retail in that area of the Santa Monica Mountains that would have those products on the shelf. Maybe like the general store or something? I don't know. But I think that in terms of the use and that kind of stuff, if we make it very clear that we don't want that stuff used here, then I would hope that organizations that are already respecting it in other jurisdictions would be respecting it here as well. Then they would have a real interesting debacle. I don't, I mean, I wouldn't be able to follow that one, but... So, I, I just want to be clear that you guys understand what I'm saying about, about that, and moving that forward. And I think that, you know, environmental people in the community are very much paying attention to, to these kinds of things, and it's something that, that I think the city should move forward.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do I have any other comments about this before we go to a vote? That's right, I have it. Life's full of tough decisions, I would say, and I am very much a rule-of-law kind of guy, and I do have a lot of respect for the city attorney. But I do kind of think that sometimes you got to step out on a limb and do the right thing. And so, I'm, I think I'm going to support Skyler, and, let's see how it goes. I think we've got the big county in front of us, and see how it goes with them, and we're sort of, while they're already there, working it out, we can work on our draft, so to speak. And then it will come up for consideration after it goes through the Planning Commission, and we can decide again. But, that's a good idea to get the process going, and maybe a little risky, but it's time for a little leadership by example, for the city of Malibu to stand up for something that's at the core of its mission statement, I would say. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so, is that it?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I would like to adjourn in the memory of a gentleman by the name of James Wirt, who recently passed away. And he was a longtime school bus driver for the Malibu High School, and Juan Cabrillo, and all those schools. In fact, he was a school bus driver for my wife when she was in third grade, and he just recently retired. And I always remembered him every day. When I'd go to my station, he would be up there at the Tava Decker doing his first stop, and he had a long gray beard, and he did many years of service to the city of Malibu, and he just recently passed away. So, I'd like to close this evening's city council meeting in the memory of Mr. James Wirt.
I'll second that. Okay? Meeting's adjourned.